Okay. Meeting will come to order. So we begin tonight with a study session. We'll do roll call and all other things after this. This is a moment where we're going to be informal. Folks will be still eating as we work and it'll be a bit of up and down, but we'll launch into this. So we have Agenda Bill 4916, Presentation and Discussion of Drafted Growing Transit Communities Strategy. And Scott, I assume you'll take care of it from here.
I'm not sure if this is on, but Ally can fix it. Okay, thanks. Scott Greenberg, Development Services Group Director. And tonight I have with me to do the presentation Ben Bakenta, Project Manager from the Puget Sound Regional Council. Ben will be presenting the Growing Transit Communities Compact to the City Council. And at the end, we are looking for any direction you might have on whether you would like to sign the compact or need any additional information before you give us that direction. So if you do want to move forward with this, we will be back with you with a resolution and any other information you might need. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ben.
Great. Well, thank you for making time on your agenda for me this evening. Once again, I'm Ben Bakenta. I'm in the Growth Management Department at the Puget Sound Regional Council. And I'm here to talk about Growing Transit Communities. It's a project we've been working on for the last three years with a wide variety of partners. And it's been really aimed, if I can put this, that's right, at implementing the region's adopted growth management, transportation, and economic development strategies. As you may know, Puget Sound Regional Council is the metropolitan planning organization for the four-county central Puget Sound region. We develop these plans under a series of state and federal mandates to maintain a regional growth management strategy, a long-range metropolitan transportation plan for the region. And those plans help us to, or help guide us to distribute federal transportation dollars to municipalities and counties and transit agencies throughout the region. We're actually just about to launch into a competitive funding round this spring, so look for that. We fund a wide variety of transportation projects. What this effort is all about is back in 2010, the Obama Administration announced a new initiative under the Federal Partner for Sustainable Communities. And what that partnership was, or is, is a deliberate attempt by the Administration to align both funding and work programs of federal agencies so that they better get to common principles and objectives that we want to see around the country. And so this particular effort was administered by HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development. They created a new office there called the Office of Sustainable Housing in Communities. It was something that was developed under Deputy Secretary Sims when he was at HUD. And they made available $150 million in regional planning grants. A very competitive process. They received over 600 applications for projects from throughout the country. The maximum award amount was $5 million. We competed. We put together a big tent group of stakeholders, as you'll see in a moment. I'll show you some of the partners. And we were successful. We received a $5 million grant to do a three-year planning process. And what we did, we really focused on the long-range light rail and high-capacity transit corridors in the region. We were looking for a project that lay at the real center to implementation of our region's growth management plans and saw the $25 billion-plus in investment that this region is making in high-capacity transit. And that includes commuter rail, light rail, bus rapid transit throughout the region. We saw that as a real centerpiece of implementation of our region's, our region's growth management plan and our local comprehensive plans, like the city of Mercer Island's plan. We focused on really four components of the work program. Corridor-based planning, so looking at each of, we divided up all these projects into three basic corridors. The light rail and bus rapid transit corridor going north from Seattle all the way up to Everett, south from Seattle to Tacoma, and then east, of course, is the East Link alignment. And we, in that, wanted to understand the different development opportunities that were associated with the station areas in those corridors, as well as the second piece there was really trying to build the capacity of local communities to engage effectively in planning and implementation. So educating local communities about what opportunities were ahead and better understanding what potential impacts and challenges that different communities may face over the long development timeline of all these rail corridors and the other types of transit investments that we're making. A third piece we really recognized, and Arthur Sullivan was a central part of this work, we had a piece of the work program focused on housing affordability, really better trying to understand current needs and trends in housing affordability throughout the region, better understanding what tools we may need to put in place to preserve housing as real estate markets change based upon the implementation of these projects. And then also providing better financial tools and data. You know, what can we do as a region to provide those sort of missing resources or techniques to enhance and preserve affordability in places strategically throughout the region where we want to make sure that we have affordable housing? We also had, and I won't get too much into this one, we had some money, about one and a half million of the five, was passed through directly to the cities of Seattle, Tacoma, and to King County to do some really specific work in King County, in Seattle's case, at the Northgate Station area, understanding how King County may redevelop the transit center there, the property they own adjacent to the mall over time. In Tacoma, looking at south downtown Tacoma and redevelopment potential there. We also reserved some funds to do some very specific work in the east corridor. So we worked with the cities with a task force made up of representatives from this corridor. So Mercer Island was represented, the city of Bellevue was represented, Redmond, as well as community and other stakeholder interests. And we identified some on-the-ground work that we could do at the 130th Station and at Overlake Village to build on work that had already been taken, a planning that has already taken place conducted by the cities of Bellevue and Redmond. So that's the big, high-level work program. I mentioned we had a pretty big tent of partners. These are just the formal signatories to a compact that we, or rather, not a compact, but a consortium agreement, a memorandum of understanding that helped to guide this work over the last three years. So several cities were formal signatories to that MOU, counties, transit agencies, public health and human service organizations, regional groups, for-profit and nonprofit developers. We tried to build that big tent so we had all the right people there asking the right questions. We're making, again, $25 billion-plus in investments in this region, and we want to make sure we get the most out of it and that we do it right, that we develop in ways that makes the most out of those investments. So we brought a lot of smart people together and they helped to guide the overall work program implementation. We ended up with a strategy that was approved by our Oversight Committee last summer and that was also sort of signed on to by the Puget Sound Regional Council this fall. And it took the form of a Growing Transit Communities Strategy. It's a 100-page document with a lot of actions and specific action steps for a wide variety of partners. But it was centered around implementing three key goals that lie at the heart of implementing growth management plans in our region. And that's how do we attract more of the region's future residential and employment growth in areas that are close to these transit investments so that we are building ridership, that we're making the most out of those investments? Secondly, another major goal was how do we preserve and enhance housing choice for a wide variety of affordability throughout the region, where either we don't have affordable housing now or we want to preserve it where it already exists. And also, how do we increase access to opportunity and to make sure that local communities have good access to jobs, to education, to entertainment throughout the region, that we make sure that all of our station areas and communities associated with these investments are really well-served? So this took the form of a three-part form in the strategy. The first piece is a compact. And if you're familiar with something like the Mayor's Climate Change Initiative or the Denver metropolitan area has what they call a mile-high compact. What a compact is, is this voluntary agreement. It's non-binding. It's a statement of signatories to agreement to the goals that that compact actually contains. And it lays out a vision and a problem statement, essentially. There's a recognition that all of these different types of partners that I mentioned maybe have different roles and responsibilities in creating communities in this region. So this compact is a statement that the signatories will work toward the objectives that are laid out, that the signatories agree to the common goals and objectives. The compact also states that the signatories would consider the individual action steps that are identified in the Growing Transit Communities Strategy document. So it's a menu of choices, essentially, appropriate to different types of organizations and jurisdictions. And so as you update your comprehensive plans or create transportation projects, there might be some strategies or actions that you could employ that we've identified in this document. And so it also contains a commitment to working together as we implement this over time. So we, as I mentioned, we had an Oversight Committee of over 40 members throughout this process. And we want to continue that Oversight Committee in a slightly different way as an Advisory Committee on Regional Transit-Oriented Development that can provide recommendations or advice to the Puget Sound Regional Council's boards, so of elected officials, our Growth Management Policy Board, Transportation Policy Board, and our Executive Board. So that's the big overview of the compact. I mentioned the toolkit of strategies and actions. They're divided into four different buckets, essentially. The first are what we call foundation strategies. They're really regional initiatives for the most part, calling on the Puget Sound Regional Council to continue to coordinate and conduct work, develop information, work toward creating new tools that local jurisdictions and others can use. The second piece about attracting growth, we have a number of strategies with specific action steps designed for the Regional Council, for transit agencies, for municipalities, for nonprofit groups, for the private sector, things that can be done to really incent and attract growth in priority locations. The third bucket is housing choices. A lot of work was done, as I mentioned, to look at affordability issues throughout the region, to look at trends, to look at the availability of tools that we may develop to help local jurisdictions and others develop affordable housing where we want it to be located. And then lastly, we have some strategies and actions addressing access to opportunity, helping to, some suggestions and best practices for community engagement, for assessing community needs, and for addressing some of those needs over time. We recognize absolutely that, we looked at 74 different station areas in this analysis in those three corridors, recognizing that they're all very, very different, different development markets, different roles in accommodating growth. Some are simply access points or will-be access points, like the South Bellevue Park and Ride to the regional transportation system. We don't anticipate very much development there at all. Others, like the Mercer Island Station, are associated with your town center where you are channeling growth over time. Others are places like downtown Seattle, you know, major employment centers. So we developed a typology, so a way to analyze those stations, looking at characteristics of communities, so a people lens, as well as a place lens that looked at market characteristics, urban forum, other things like that. And we were able to come up with eight different types of, basic types of communities that, as you can see, range from sort of aggressively sort of protecting and growing places. Some stations really have no housing at all right now, and so being aggressive about trying to develop housing in those stations, others about more, building more urban places. So think of suburban locations that have maybe a more suburban, urban forum, disconnected streets or very few streets, not very walkable, focusing investments on those types of projects to help those stations be all that they can be. We did an evaluation of each of the region's stations, as I mentioned, and they have a one page. I'll leave these for you to look at later. We looked at each station, looked at urban forum, looked at local planning, and then categorized them as one of these types of stations. The Mercer Island Station is a transform and diversify type of station. And what that means is these are the types of places that typically have strong markets, a lot of potential for real estate activity in the short term, for development activity. But they also maybe, some of them have more limited housing choices, and so diversification of the activities and the types of uses is really important, as well as providing the infrastructure investments like roads and sidewalks and stormwater infrastructure to support growth that you're already planning for. So each of these eight types is actually keyed to the, some of the, over 200 separate actions that we have in the strategy. So you can really kind of look at what are the most important things that maybe need to be tackled over the short term in these different types of communities, to prioritize what first steps may be. I mentioned the Mercer Island profile. It's available on our website. We have a lot of data behind these profiles. And we worked with Scott and, well, for each of the jurisdictions to develop all of these profiles. And you can see in these corridors how you have different types of places in different parts of the region. Some of them, again, about more important to address emerging community needs. In other stations, more important to address physical infrastructure needs. So a lens to look at those actions. As I mentioned, there are roles for all different types of partners moving forward. Certainly, it was recognized that this isn't just, it's not up to government to solve all of the problems in these areas or address all of the needs, but there are roles for housing agencies and authorities, groups like ARCH. There are roles for private and nonprofit developers. There are roles for major employers, educational institutions, for regional agencies like PSRC, for other regional agencies like Sound Transit. And we all have to work together on common, sort of in concert, to make sure that we're getting the most out of the investments we're making. We, PSRC, so this grant concluded actually last Friday, was the last official day of the contract with HUD, although a small portion of it has been extended. We were able to identify some resources in PSRC's budget to continue coordinating this over the next couple of years. So we have some dedicated staff who will be focusing on transit-oriented development issues throughout the region. I mentioned the Advisory Committee that we're going to convene, and that Advisory Committee will be made up of signatories to the Growing Transit Communities Compact. And that group will provide recommendations and advice to PSRC's boards. We also, right now, are advertising for a position to focus on housing. We've never at PSRC had a planner or a staff person that really focused on housing issues and helping to coordinate and working with groups from throughout the region on emerging issues. One thing we also recognize for this staff, so we'll have three staff working on this, is that we're entering a really critical window of plan implementation over the next couple of years. Your local comprehensive plans, or all of the region's plans, are beginning a required periodic update process, and you're going to be hearing about that more on your agenda tonight. And so here's an opportunity to make sure that local jurisdictions are considering different, maybe new approaches to how their communities develop, new tools, new regulatory approaches, new incentives. And so we feel that if we provide a lot of direct technical assistance from PSRC over the next couple of years, we can really make sure that we're acting in a coordinated way and addressing many of the opportunities that we have before us. I think I'd just conclude by saying, you know, what's in it for Mercer Island? Why should Mercer Island sign on to this compact? Again, it's non-binding, so it doesn't require the city to do anything. It asks you to consider a menu of options. But we do think, in this era of diminishing resources that are available from the federal government, that the more that we can demonstrate that we are coordinated, that we are working towards common objectives, we're hearing from our federal funding partners at the Transit Administration, at HUD, at FHWA, the Highway Administration, that the more that we can demonstrate that we're coordinated, the better, more competitive we are in securing diminishing resources from those sources. Good example is in the budget that was just passed by Congress, there is a new round of Tiger Grants. If you're familiar with Tiger Grants, they're transportation funding sources. We've heard from federal highways and from the Transit Administration and from HUD that regions that are working under, to implement strategies like this, will be highly, highly competitive for those dollars. So it makes sense for us to demonstrate that we're working towards common objectives. I mentioned that we'll have an Advisory Committee that will be making recommendations to PSRC's boards that may take the form of suggested new policies or programs or administrative procedures at PSRC. Signatories to the compact have a seat on that Advisory Committee, so a place at the table to make sure that your voice is heard. So signatories, signing the compact is important to take part in that process. And also, we think that for any individual station area to be successful, the corridor has to be successful. And there's some peace of mind of knowing that all the jurisdictions and organizations that are along a corridor are acting with the same information and are aiming towards the same types of objectives and goals. So there's some, if we can get, our first push is to visit all of the cities along these three light rail corridors. There are about 16 of them that the light rail go through right now or will be going through. And so we're visiting all these jurisdictions and hoping to have a united front in terms of compact signatories. So I think with that, I'll turn it over to any questions you may have. I know I went over a lot of information in a very short time, but it's been a very exciting project. We've learned a lot. We've had great representation from throughout the region, a lot of citizen participation and comment on the draft strategies and actions as we were developing them. And we're really excited to continue to work to implement what we've come up with.
Well, thank you for that. So council members, questions? Donna?
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry for coming a little bit late. I'm personally pretty excited about this. We, as a council, have been talking about how we can look at our town center and anything around TOD and figure out what we want to do moving forward in anticipation of light rail coming. And this provides a nice framework that, good to know that we're not trying to do this in a vacuum or by ourselves. My question is, okay, so read the report, looked at that. What concrete steps, other than being part of a broader solution, having a seat at the table, are we to do next as a council and as a community?
Sure. It's a great question. As I mentioned, and you'll be hearing more tonight about the scope of work for your comprehensive plan update, one of the, a real concrete step that you can take is looking at the strategies and actions that we've identified and other resources that we've compiled and working those into your local plans and policies and incentive programs. You consider those actions as you're updating your comprehensive plan. That's a real immediate concrete next step.
Other questions? Dan?
Has Bellevue not considered this one yet? Because I noticed they're absent.
Yeah, we've been going, as you can imagine, getting on agendas, on council agendas has been kind of tough, especially in the fall. We've gone and briefed the council, and we're going back in the next few weeks. I'm not sure exactly when we're scheduled, but the city of Redmond has signed on, Kirkland has signed on, Bellevue, again, I was going to mention we're going back. So just the timing is such that they haven't yet taken action to sign into the compact.
And King County?
King County also. We've gone and briefed King County. We did in the fall, and we're going back again for sort of a second discussion sometime this winter.
Mike, do you have a?
What, or how's this going to go? We're going to do questions and then we're going to talk about it, or what? Because the takeaway is whether we want to continue.
At the end of the day, there's an ask here for, do we want to become part of this compact?
Okay. I don't have any questions of Ben, but I do have something I want to say at the appropriate time.
Okay. So let's, we're not far from that moment, but let's see if there are any other questions first. A quiet bunch. Jane?
I just had a quick question related to information in the packet that we received, strategy number nine. It's page 27, Exhibit 3. I just saw a reference to the Right Size Parking Project, and I'm wondering, is that a King County project? Is that Growing Transit Communities?
That was a King County project. It was separately funded under a different grant. And we, if you've been following that project at all, it looked at, what it did was it looked at parking needs of different types of development and different strategies that can be used to share parking, to make sure that you're not providing too much parking. Parking is expensive and tends to drive up the cost of, can drive up the cost of development, especially if it's a structured parking like a garage. So that project came up with a whole series of recommendations of next steps, of ways that you might look at parking and parking needs and to coordinate that. So King County, at the end of their grant project, looked to us at PSRC and said, there'd be some benefit of regionalizing this and expanding its scope, looking in Snohomish County, looking in Pierce County, Kitsap County, understanding how regional parking markets operate. So there was a sort of request that we consider, PSRC consider, if we have the resources, to continue that project and to help develop that more regional implementation of our right-size parking.
Thank you. We're real interested in parking around here. Thank you.
Other questions?
All right. Well, Scott, if I could, so to me, this looks very interesting, but I want to hear from a staff perspective, how this meshes with what you would already be doing, already be thinking about, how much work this might be putting on you, how does this mesh with the comp plan work you're doing? Can you give us, sort of, you know, frame this for us in that respect?
Sure, sure. As Ben said, I think this blends very well with the comprehensive plan work we'll be talking about at the end of your agenda tonight. I will say, even if the council decides, for whatever reason, you do not want to sign the regional compact, we would still, under the whole umbrella of compliance with regional goals and policies, we would still be looking at the about 60 local actions that are called for in the document. We would still be evaluating those as part of our work on the comprehensive plan. Some of them would apply to Mercer Island, others would not, but we would still have to look at those regardless of whether you sign the compact or not. So there's no additional work involved.
So you're looking, but, so should we join the, should we or should we not join from your perspective, and why?
I think the council should sign the compact. I think there's strength in numbers. I agree with what Ben was saying about getting future federal monies for transportation projects and other things. If we all share the same goals and are all trying to achieve those goals working together, I think that we might be more successful in that. I don't see any negatives in signing. We're not, you would not be binding the city to anything. It's all voluntary. But I think it's a statement, it's sort of like Ben referred to the mayor's statement on climate change. That's not a binding, that was not a binding action, but it states the councils and the cities' intent to support something that's bigger than just happening within the city boundaries.
And from a staff time perspective, being a member of this, do you see that taking any appreciable time?
I haven't.
Beyond what you would be spending anyway, working on the comp plan and all the, you know, review of ideas and recommendations to council?
We haven't had that conversation about how much staff time would be involved. I will tell you that since I arrived here in October of 2012, this effort was well underway by then. In fact, it was nearly complete. So I did attend some of the meetings, and I think the east side meetings were like once every two months or something like that, for maybe an hour. So that's something I would consider part of our daily workload and daily routine is attending meetings like that.
Okay. So no big deal.
But you might be a little.
Yeah, the advisory committee that I mentioned and the Housing Committee, an Advisory Committee on housing, we anticipate those would be probably quarterly meetings or maybe additional as needed, so it wouldn't be a huge amount of time. And again, their attendance would be voluntary, participation is sort of needed and interested.
Okay. Other questions? I'm going to move to discussion.
I was wondering, Arthur, could I, can I ask you a question on your take on this thing and how, I mean, you're sort of our advisor on housing programs.
Yeah, come on up to a microphone if you don't mind.
We rely upon you for advice on affordable housing, which, reading this report, a lot of it is, I mean, from the perspective of what Mercer Island can do. It seems that the biggest opportunity would be to enhance affordable housing.
Right.
On the transit base. And I mean, so you know the city, you know this council. What's this going to, what will you tell us two years from now after we join this compact and how we're going to move forward with this?
So I think this, maybe, Arthur Sullivan, Program Manager of ARCH, for record, I think there's two ways of thinking about it. One was sort of already kind of alluded to, which is the regional voice issue. And not only is that a good thing potentially to find places And not only is that a good thing potentially to find places where cities can come together, and that can be at the elected level or even the staff level, and learn from each other, which is what in our actually have been doing for certain housing issues, just from the East King County coalition here, you're going to be bringing together other jurisdictions that are looking at centers. The other practical side of that, which I don't think maybe Ben alluded to it, is this compact is potentially putting this region in a better situation to get federal funds, especially transportation dollars, because increasingly, the federal government is looking at, you get points for your region having a compact like this. So there is potentially an indirect-direct benefit of this region of having a strong compact and trying to impress the federal government when you're putting together proposals. Now, from the housing direct point of view, one reason I got very involved, and this goes back to your question about concrete outcomes, is in the affordable housing arena, we were looking at several very specific tools to try to get implemented to help with housing. Some of the more general stuff, in fact, we were the model for what this could do for some other areas where they would have staff expertise on housing issues. So on that level, in fact, we had one of our staff persons loaned to this partnership to help the regional conversation. So at some level, you're already getting that, but some of these tools that may be developed as a result of the work in the compact and developed by the compact, one was using surplus land, but another is how to maybe help secure property that may, in the end, include some transit uses, some TOD, but also some housing affordability with that, is one of the tools that's being directly an outgrowth of this effort and may benefit communities in East King County, including your own. So there's one direct tool that's trying to be developed. There may be some other tools like that through this partnership, but that's the one most specific one that we're working on at this time, and they're trying to actually put in place.
So just a follow-up. One of the other agenda bills we have is to approve the budget for Arch. And included in that is the -- that as vis a vis Mercer Island, Arch is going to assist our city staff with updating the comp plan housing element.
Correct.
So if we join this compact, is your advice to Scott and the planning commission going to be that we need to change zoning somehow or change density or reduce slot sizes or do something else that would enhance? I mean, that's generally what this initiative seems to call for in a place like Mercer Island.
So when we were first starting, I've been involved with this effort from the very beginning, and one of the challenges in this effort is, it's a pretty large region. The East Corridor communities were somewhat different than especially North Corridor and, to some extent, the South Corridor, in that a number of the cities had already done the first stage of planning for your TOD areas. And so in East King -- and that includes you, Bell Red, Overlake and Redmond, downtown Redmond. And so when we did the work in East Corridor, we were trying to think through issues such as, what's the next step of making those things, those plans happen? So it's not going to -- I don't see, and I helped write the housing sections and the strategies there and watched them very carefully from the perspective of our members, is I don't think you'll see huge, any huge shift from there from your basic planning. It'll focus more on, like Redmond researched, how can they potentially maybe do some infrastructure on a more sub-regional level, a whole neighborhood level? And could they, would that be a better approach? So the idea behind the compact is they've done the studies on that, and maybe some of the other cities, hey, maybe that will work for us, too. So I don't see it being any core shift in what you've been doing and some of the stuff we've helped you with the last few years. It may be more, how do you get some more things happening along the lines of those plans? Not so much changes in the plan, but helping to move the plans forward. And so that's what the conversation around the East Corridor cities was more around, not going back and revisiting the work from the previous 10 years, but helping you move forward.
Okay. Other questions?
We may bounce back to questions as we converse here, so don't go far if you don't mind. So council members, discussion we're trying to get to, do we support this, signing out of this compact or not? Mike, maybe you want to go first, since you said you --
No, I'd like to listen to why you'd like to sign this.
Okay.
Why would you like to sign this?
Anyone want to go first on that? We're a quiet bunch tonight.
I'll just make one observation. If I were writing a news story about how the city council decided to support this, I'd probably include the three goals, and the number one goal would kind of freak out a lot of people in the way it says attract growth. I think Mercer Islanders might be freaked out by that because they're going to say, we don't want any more growth. But if you read what's underneath it, I think most people would go along with conducts, you know, station area planning, use land efficiently, locate, design, provide access to transit stations to support TODs, adopt innovative parking tools, invest in infrastructure. I just think attracting growth would not get any support from Mercer Island.
But you, at a drill-down level, think it makes more sense?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Anyone else? Donna?
Yeah, I definitely think we should. I think this is, gives us a little bit of that framework that we were looking for from our conversation during the planning session of how do we move forward and looking and talking about our town center and where we go around transit-oriented development and what do we need in our town as we anticipate light rail coming. And these are a lot of the questions that have been asked and a lot of the tools that are already right there on the plate for us to look at. So I definitely think so.
Benson?
Yeah, I'm a supporter, simply because, for one thing -- I mean, I think we want to be a regional player and want to be involved in trying to resolve some of these issues. On the other hand, I think we really need to, and I think Ben mentioned it, I mean, this is, they have a whole menu of different strategies. I think it's going to be really important to make sure that strategies that we develop with the help of Scott and our staff is simply really focused on Mercer Island individually. I mean, one size doesn't fit all, and I think it's just important to keep that in mind.
Okay. Debbie, you want to go?
It's tough technology here.
The whole on-off. Could be complicated.
It can be, in this case. In principle, yeah, definitely, I think we, I think what you've seen from the council, particularly in the last few years, is an interest and an intent to engage on some important and strategic regional issues. I admit, I am still struggling to find out what that means quite specifically for our community, which, you know, puts me in a gray area, which also makes me a little bit uneasy. I tend to be somebody who likes to have some fairly clear understanding of cause and effect. But Arthur's comments regarding housing and putting it in that specific explanation or context certainly helped me understand that this is more about facilitating what I consider to be a direction that we've already taken, more or less already outlined, as opposed to substantial delta change in the comprehensive plan that we have known versus where we would be going in a revised version, particularly accommodating this. So the, I just wallow in signing something that's non-binding, but I think principally I'm there. I think I would just very much look to Scott and his team in the event that there are specifics that we need to understand, understand the boil down and be able to evaluate, because it's, you know, it's great to be a regional supporter, but we also need to understand what we have directly or indirectly committed ourselves to.
Ready, Mike, or you?
Sure, I'll go.
All right.
Okay. Ben, great presentation, but this is just business. I don't see eye to eye with you on this project here. Council, I plead to you, I plead to you, don't become a signatory to this compact. This is not in Mercer Island's best interest. Months ago, I said that I warned the community that our central business district boundaries were being entertained to be expanded. You look at these sheets that they have right there, and it shows where the central business district area boundaries will be expanded. Here on the island, we have an explicit, I think it's an explicit understanding with our citizens that growth will be concentrated within the CBD. The CBD will, boundaries will not be changed. I think that's an explicit understanding that we have with our citizens, and that plan explicitly shows where, and I mean, it's common sense, if you develop a transportation-oriented district development, TOD, you're going to expand the central business district boundary. What is it, a half mile? What's your ideal walking distance, half mile?
This simply illustrates a half mile.
Just in planning purposes, Ben, what did you say?
It's a half-mile study area is what it represents.
What is it, a half? Half mile?
Half mile.
So citizens out there, draw a circle a half a mile from where East Link will be in 2023, if they're lucky. And that's where this proposal will lead us down. That's the path this place will lead us down. And I think our citizens look upon us not to do that, not to do that. Now, this program is sold partly on the basis of a statement that mutual understanding that some tools may be, may work in some locations, and that each partner retains flexibility discretion in pursuing the strategies that will work best in specific locations. That's the way they hook you. When in practice, in practice, that's not the way it works. And I'll just use, I'll just reference two agenda items, interestingly, that we have today, okay? On tab four, which is the Kovul property, on page 26, this is AB 4912, today's packet. We'll talk, it's right in here, Katie, I can read it. There's another moment for you reading what's in the packet.
I'm just not really comfortable since I --
Oh, we're just reading what's in the packet. I understand.
Can I just make the record? I don't, not comfortable about you, it's coming up as a quasi-judicial hearing before the council, and I think using that as any example is not appropriate.
It's in the packet.
I think it's inappropriate for you to run example in this situation.
I'm just going to read what it says on here. On page 26, under paragraph three, conclusions of law, that public health and welfare will be served by the approval of the project because it will provide additional housing to meet the cities, and I'll add growth management targets. Again, that's an overall regional plan that now we are being told that that's one of the things that's got to drive our development. And then again, on tab 11, on AB 4919, that we'll talk about later on today, the purpose of this review is to bring plans and development regulations in compliance with Growth Management Act requirements that have been added or changed since the last update. Next paragraph. In addition to the Growth Management Act, the update must be consistent with applicable policies and regional planning documents. That's what we're talking about. This is another regional planning document that maybe six months or a year, two years ago down the road, it'll come back to us, and we have to do this and this to our community so that we are consistent with applicable policies and regional planning. So very much, and Ben, you concluded your statement with quote, so that we want to do this so we have the quote, same type of objectives and goals of the corridor. That is a paintbrush solution that you're suggesting, that's where this will lead to, that is not in Mercer Islanders' best interests. So I appreciate the work that you've done here, but it just is not what our citizens want. Because signing on as a signatory for this compact sends the wrong signal to PSRC and the development of our area, which would be the TOD, and it sends the wrong signal to our citizens. It sends a signal that they don't want to have, that we are entertaining, expanding, because that's the vision, that the central business district area will expand north. And that's not good, if you look, because there are people there with single-family residences that are very happy. There are multifamily residences there that I'll bet you, I'll bet you fulfill affordable housing price standards. But because it wasn't created under the auspices of a program, a government program, it doesn't get counted. But mark my word, I mean, you know, everybody's familiar with that. It might need a new thing of paint or something, but it, there are residences in there that fulfill the affordable housing standards, but it doesn't get counted as affordable housing because it's not under the auspices of a program. Please do not forward this that we want to be a signatory on this compact. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Dan, you want to go?
Mike, to be candid, I had some of the same concerns when I first read this, and this is why I asked Arthur the question I'd asked him, because he is also going to be advising us on the comp plan that you were just referring to. And I think his answer, and I thought it was an appropriate one, is that Mercer Island is already ahead of the game in terms of implementing much of this around its future transit station. And we have done this in our comp plan before by providing for additional density in the town center. We've implemented affordable housing incentives, and so we are, I'm not saying 100% of the way there, but we are a long ways down the road. So I'm not, I perfectly well understand your concerns, but I'm not, I don't think that our signing this is in any way a statement that we're going to downzone extensive areas of the North End, and nor do I think anyone in this council is proposing in any way, shape or manner, moving commercial or retail activity north of I-90, beyond the Roanoke, which is the only thing there now. So I don't think there's any discussion of that. The, what this does afford us, and I think Benson mentioned this and Scott also mentioned it, is that, you know, we are, particularly with the advent of the whole tolling debacle, it became very clear to this council, yourself included, that we need to be regional players. And for us to refuse to sign off on this because, and what that message will send, what that message will say is that the Mercer Island doesn't believe in regional initiatives and Puget Sound Regional Council, which has spent three years working on this, you know, we don't care about you. We can't afford to do that anymore, because there will be, even if we have resolved I-90 tolling, which I hope we have, there will be other issues down the road where we need the region. And right now, this doesn't obligate us to make any changes. Arthur has told us that we've already implemented much of what this might otherwise require, and so I feel comfortable that we can approve this without in any way sacrificing the North End.
And Dan, thank you, because I was going to say roughly that, but I was going to do a lot worse job of it. So thank you for saving me from bumbling around it. Noel, Katie, what do we do in terms of an outcome here this evening that's appropriate for a study session? Do we have you bring this back to a regular agenda item after telling you, giving you the direction to do that, or do we do something else?
Yeah, I think if you want to give us a thumbs up or thumbs down indication, then we'll know whether or not to bring this back as an item for formal approval.
And our plan was, if you give us a kind of a thumbs up, we'll bring it back to your next meeting on February 24th as a resolution. So you would adopt the compact. You would authorize the mayor to sign it, but PSRC is asking for a resolution to support the compact.
Okay.
So that's what we've been bringing back.
So you'd see that on the 24th.
Very good. Okay. So council members, in favor or opposed, thumbs up means you're in favor, thumbs down means you're opposed. Okay. Bring it back. Okay. With that, Ben, thank you very much. Scott, thank you very much. We are adjourned for 10 minutes. We'll come back at 7:00 with our regular meeting. Thanks very much.
Absolutely. Yes.
I'm probably not the most glib speaker on the subject, but okay. With that, we'll move along. Before we go to public comments tonight, we do have a special guest, Jane Hague, our county council member. Jane, would you like to come on up? Welcome, and thank you very much for joining us.
Oh, good evening, Mayor Basset, and it's so nice to be here in front of you for my annual... So what's the county council up to today, this year? And I just want to say, thank you for your comments about the Seahawks. I think that there is this tremendous energy in our community right now, and all the issues don't seem nearly as important as the quality of life that this huge win brought for all of us. So I hope that we'll all have a chance to celebrate on Wednesday at the parade, beginning at 11 o'clock, and ending up at CenturyLink. So, so much for my plug. I am Jane Hague, District 6 representative on the King County Council, and I really enjoy my opportunities to come and talk to the cities in District 6 about what we're doing and asking input on how we can do our job better, and to listen carefully to the issues that you're facing. I have been re-elected as vice chair of the council, and last year we started a new focus for one of the two vice chairs of the council, and that is regional coordination. And we began a strategic plan about five years ago, and the strategic plan takes a look at a number of issues, one of them being the kind of relationships that we have and the partnerships that we create in order to solve our problems regionally and locally. And so my focus for 2014 is continued transparency and regular communication, not only with the cities directly, but also working with sound cities in the city of Seattle. And I think we are building on some really strong partnerships that have evolved over the past few years, particularly those partnerships surrounding transportation. And I believe that those partnerships not only leverage our voice, but they also leverage our finances. And since 2008, we've all had our fiscal issues, and I believe that the public is very demanding of not only sustainability, but also transparency in the way we create our policy and our finances to implement those policies. So our collective voice helps to improve the local infrastructure, the economy, and the quality of life for all. And I particularly appreciate the leadership that the city of Mercer Island has shown on so many issues. Congratulations to Deputy Mayor Grousse on your reelection to the council and your continued leadership in this arena. Congratulations, Councilmember Wong, on your election. We're glad to see your voice and face on this council. And to Councilmember and legislator Tana Sen for your continued leadership, and we certainly appreciate the connections that you're providing, not only to the cities, but also the cities in the legislature. And it's also wonderful to see Mike Ciro and Jane Brahm for their leadership on the Eastside Transportation Partnership. And certainly, your voices help to raise the quality of the dialogue on all of our Eastside transportation issues. So I think that we have a real opportunity to wrestle with the issues surrounding transit, roads, tolling, and the Eastside Rail Corridor, as well as another issue which may not sound as important, but is very important, and that is solid waste. So I congratulate you on the travel survey that was released by WashDOT in January, and it validates what we already know, that trips on and off the island are roughly split between Seattle and Bellevue, and they happen at peak commute times. And so we need to make sure in all of our policies in this region that island residents are not landlocked, that you have the ability to meet your services, meet your jobs, and meet them without paying a penalty through tolling. So anything that I can do to help you on that issue, I certainly will, and my staff have followed, as I have, your public hearing process and the studies that have gone into your very thoughtful position. So clearly, transportation issues, and most recently, the whole issue of what we're going to do with regard to our local option for transit and roads. And the county right now is very actively engaged in looking at a transportation benefit district, and we will start that process tomorrow through our Transportation Environment and Economy Committee, where we will devolve our transportation benefit district that was for only rural King County and establish a TBD for the whole county. From establishing the TBD, then, we put in place directors that will then decide what to do with regard to a ballot issue and what would go into that ballot issue for transit and roads. So I want to make sure that I've stayed in very close touch with you about that. We're looking at potentially an April ballot, April 22nd, I believe, is the date. So that is very important because not only will it forestall a 17% reduction in transit, which is a huge loss for Eastside connections, but it's a huge loss for the whole regional system. And it would also give the opportunity for 40% of the funding to go to cities for their roads. So there's an opportunity, a double benefit for Mercer Island. We're also taking a look at our comprehensive planning for solid waste. And many of you may not know, but in 2012, Cedar Hills was supposed to close. And the very fact that it now has a useful life up until 2024 is, I think, a really strong testament to the fact that we have put a major emphasis on recycling and diverting the waste stream. And so we have a lot to be proud of there in terms of our policies, but also our fiscal responsibility. Originally, in the 2000s, we were looking at 1.6 million tons over 40 years, which called for a new northeast transfer station. That waste stream has now gone down to 900,000 tons, so it doesn't mean much just hearing about tonnage, but let me put a dollar value on it. Tonnage without operating costs is $6 to $7 per ton. With operating costs, it's $12 per ton. So that is a huge amount of money that goes into what we do with our waste stream. So we probably will not have to have a new northeast transfer station. We are reconfiguring Factoria, and we are closing Houghton. So we will have a very different conveyance message, method for going to Cedar Hills. In addition to a different conveyance method, we will also, hopefully, be able to save a rate increase. So for the third year in a row, I believe the county will be able to pass on a rate that sees no fee increase. And I think that's a really good sign for transparency, for fiscal sustainability, and for regional partnerships. We've extended our comment period for Factoria. We will have a comprehensive plan that allows you an opportunity to think into the future about what it looks like. So we have a lot of issues that involve fiscal restraint reform, using new opportunities for technology, and just using best management practices. And I want to stay really well-engaged with you as we go through these processes. So in final, I just wanted to mention that the Eastside Rail Corridor is a huge opportunity for transportation and livability. The county of Snohomish has just purchased BNSF's rail bank corridors there that will connect with the Century Trail on up into Skagit County. So we have 42 miles in King County that will be dual-use, a blank canvas for the future, five partners, and we're looking at strategic planning for that whole program. So I look forward to continuing to work with you, and thank you again for all you do and for giving me the privilege of talking with you. Thanks so much.
Jane, thank you. Before you sit down, I'm not going to let you off just that easy. I do want to let you know, if you didn't already, that we did have a briefing by Diane Carlson at our last meeting about the TBD, the proposed TBD, and at our planning session, which happened this past weekend, we discussed that and voted, decided to be supportive of that.
Oh, that's terrific.
The council's already taken a position in support of the TBD.
May I share that, then, with my colleagues?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
I may see you tomorrow night at the hearing.
You will. Thank you so much.
Councilmembers, anything for Jane before we let her go? All right?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming. Much appreciated.
My pleasure.
Okay, after that, now we move to something which undoubtedly will be my opportunity to tick some of you off, but here we go. So we have, this evening, the Koval property, a decision whether to put it on our calendar for our next meeting. And I suspect that some of you are here with the hope to speak to that. So I have a statement from our attorney, which I will read, and then I will talk just a little bit more after that, at which point she'll get nervous, because I'm not reading from the paper. So this says, "Now time for public comments. If you're here to comment on the Koval long plat, the city council cannot take additional comments that are not already in the record made before the planning commission. The only issue on Koval before the council tonight is the setting of the public hearing. I'm going to ask you to refrain from making any comments regarding the Koval long plat to the council." So we are well aware that there is a desire to speak. Katie is working on the question of whether there will be an opportunity. I cannot offer that there will be, but I can tell you that we know that there is a desire. The complexity here is that this is, the council, 99% of the time, is operating in its regular legislative capacity. In this case, we are operating, in the case of the Koval property, we're operating in a different capacity, which is called a quasi-judicial capacity. And when we're operating in that capacity, we're severely constrained in what we may do, in what we may hear from others, and in how we may act. It's quasi-judicial, sort of like what you would run up against in a court of law. So it's uncomfortable to us. I know it's uncomfortable to you, but there it is, and I can't change that. So with that, we will move to regular public comments. If you're here about the Koval property, I'd say feel free to shoot an email to Katie, letting her know that you're interested in speaking, but unfortunately, at this point, I can't do anything for you. Okay? So I'll take, let's take a moment. If you're here about Koval and wanting to exit without disturbing comments, we can do that. Go out and form a rabble if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we can just, on the council--
Yeah, la-la-la-la. Again, I know this is an awkward moment, discomforting to me. I'd much rather be in a position to hear what you've got to say, but I can't offer that to you tonight. So we will take just a moment here. If you're here for other public comments, feel free to sort of wander up towards the microphone, and as things quiet back down, we'll go ahead and take regular public comments.
I am not going to speak about Koval, but I am going to speak about 84th Street. I have lived on Southeast 34th Street, and you know there's a miracle on 34th Street for 25 years.
Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy Spade. I live on 34th Street. And I've lived there 25 years. So I'm going to say that it's been dangerous for us to walk on 84th Street for the entire time I've lived there. There are no lights. I come up the road, and I can't see people, especially if they have dark clothes or a dark dog. And it's dangerous. It's extremely dangerous. The other thing I wanted to mention is the houses, the new houses that are being built there, the footprint is too big. I come from a development family, two brothers and three nephews are developers, and my daughter, who's 37, said that she would not buy one of them, because there's no yard where the children can play. The footprint is too big, and the children will be playing in the street.
Nancy, I'm going to ask you to hold for just a second. Katie, you're going to need to determine how you want to manage code language here, and by that I mean language that's aiming at something without saying it.
I still think this is commentary on Koval, and I apologize--
It's not.
Well, it actually technically is, because those are issues related that were developed in the record, and so I think we're running afoul of the intent.
I'm sorry, I didn't know I was running afoul of the record. I just am talking about safety and the big houses that are being built that have no yard for the children to play in. I'm not talking about the Koval houses at all, never have. Has nothing to do with those. They're going to have plenty of yard, but the other ones don't, and the children will be playing in the streets.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, this is new for me, right? I normally run meetings that are not complicated in this fashion, so we're going to be feeling our way through this if we have to.
I think you're doing a great job.
See what you say afterwards.
Good evening. I have another training to go to after this, so I won't be here. I'm going to the preparedness training at the firehouse, which started at 7:00, so. Good evening. My name is Meg Lippert. I live at 4052 94th Avenue Southeast, and I came to thank you, city council members, and you, city manager, for listening to me and to the other citizens who, at your city council meeting two weeks ago, we expressed our concerns about the KCLS's final plans to remodel the Mercer Island Library, plans that would completely change the layout and interior features of our library and require it to be closed for up to a year. And I want to thank you for listening to us. I also want to thank you for asking probing questions of the KCLS staff when they presented the plans at your January 24th annual planning meeting. I especially want to thank you for inviting two citizens, Marsha Melinger and Brian Cairns, to provide public input at that meeting. And in addition, I thank you for unanimously voting to send a letter to the KCLS Board of Trustees requesting that they defer final approval of the plans to provide further opportunity for public input. And if that public input demonstrates the need for changes to the plans, the opportunity for KCLS staff and the projects architect to make those changes. And I would like to thank Deputy Mayor Dan Grass for signing the letter. I would also like to thank Councilmember Debbie Bertland, Councilmember Benson Wong, and our city manager for testifying to the KCLS Board of Trustees at their meeting on January 29th in favor of additional islander input. And thank you for your decision to get additional public input by appointing a committee of three council members dedicated to reaching out to the public, and three citizens dedicated to supporting our library and the islanders who use it. You all demonstrate true representative government. I am proud to be a Mercer Island resident, and I am proud of our community for electing you. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to not have to deal with a complicated one there.
I have to use tools to extricate you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you, all your council members and city staff, for your service. It's never easy. This is a tough task. Thank you for taking on the responsibility. We've got two different issues that I want to touch on.
And please begin by your--
My name is Bharat, Bharat Shan. I live on, at 8435 Southeast 34. I worked in government for a short duration, for a year and a half, where I was in the cabinet of the governor and had about a billion dollars of spending that I had to, essentially, okay, pretty much every day was one big government spend or another that I had to approve. And one of the things that I observed was that, after having spent about 18-plus years in an aggressive private sector company, one of the things I observed is that our government staff in Olympia were very, 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 shall we say, driven by the public spirit, very hardworking, and really wanted to do the right thing, just like our public staff here, our career staff here on the city. The other thing I observed was that they were very intimidated by big business, by someone coming in with lots of money, big multinational companies. I could see the negotiation that was going on between the two of them, and they were essentially tying their hands and their feet behind themselves and preventing themselves from being good negotiators. I see many people on the council here who have plenty of experience in the private sector. Nobody with carrier government experience, though, interestingly. I urge you to take that into mind and bring all your negotiating skills to play to, I'll talk about a second topic. I want to thank Dan Grousse for the email that he sent out to all the citizens, and the last item he said was, "Let's try and see if we can improve the city code. Should we improve the city code and improve development code?" What I'd like to urge is that the city council members try their darndest to enforce the city code as it exists today. Enforce it in letter, enforce it in spirit. Do not be scared of big business, okay? Our political system and the way it's set up is completely tilted towards big business being able to negotiate with government in a way that the government essentially pushes all its chips away. And there's plenty in today's building code, there's plenty of things in today's building code, that you can enforce in letter and spirit to ensure that our city remains a gem to live in. For example--
This is your cue, Katie?
If you have a very steep slope and you want to chop out six feet--
And I--
Thank you.
I guess you're saying that that's an example of not enforcing the city code? Okay, Terry, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Terry Potmeyer, and although I am a resident of Mercer Island, I'm actually here tonight in my role as CEO of Friends of Youth. We are the primary provider of services to homeless youth and young adults in the east side of King County. And we were recently notified of an award through ARCH for the creation of two homes for foster youth and extended foster care. Included in that funding is a contribution from the city of Mercer Island of $1,680. Friends of Youth has been providing foster care in our communities since 1951. Too many of the youth that we serve, and over 35% of all foster youth in Washington State, become homeless after exiting the foster care system. With the recent expansion of extended care in our state, foster youth who choose to do so can remain in the foster care system until the age of 21 while they pursue education and employment, and get ready to launch to stable, successful adulthood. Friends of Youth's two new homes in Kirkland, close to both educational opportunities and employment, will be a home where 10 foster youth in extended care will receive the support, the life skills training, the education, and the employment they need to become self-sufficient adults. We are really very, very grateful for this support, for your support of foster youth through this funding, and for your support of affordable housing through the ARCH process. Thank you so much.
Terry, thank you, and thank you for all the work you do. Come on up.
So I'm Beverly Bridge, and I live at 8400 Southeast 34th Place and had written a letter concerning a property and my concerns about traffic. I'm curious, because I came to the last planning meeting, and I hear a lot of falsehoods, and I'm curious, city attorney, why, as a citizen of Mercer Island for 22 years, other than writing a letter addressing my concerns, why none of the neighborhood is being able to talk about the concern? So I'm just, I don't understand. When I was at the planning meeting, I heard some things that weren't true. I heard some codes that didn't make sense to me. Can you clarify--
Actually, I'm a little concerned that this comment is straying into the area of the Koval thing. So I'm happy to have a separate conversation with you. I'm more than happy to have that conversation with you, but I think at this point, it's bringing comments up with regard to the long plat that--
But can you explain what the process is?
I'm happy to.
And you all understand what the process is, that we can't comment?
They do.
Is this a legal issue?
Yes. And so I'm happy to have that conversation with you. I think at this point, though, any further discussion with the council, that's what we were talking about, why at this point, we're trying to restrict any comments with regard to that. But I'll give you my phone number, and we can have--
Okay, and has our neighborhood gotten a notice of why none of us can comment on what's going on in our neighborhood? I just don't understand. I mean, I get some--
You and I can have our conversation after, so do you want to shut off the mic? And we can just go ahead and have the conversation. Do you want my phone number?
Yeah, I would love it, because none of this makes any sense to me.
Anyone else? Okay, we are concluded on public comments, then. And we will move to minutes. So we have one set of minutes for our January 21st meeting.
I move we accept the minutes from the study session and regular meeting minutes of January 21st, 2014.
Second.
Corrections? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. We have a whopping large consent calendar. I won't read all the items on it. Mike, I know you're going to pull something. Let's have a motion for it, and then we'll pull things after this motion. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 4923, please.
Okay, move back to the first item of regular business. Anyone else?
I had a question for Katie, but she's no longer here.
With regards to the consent calendar.
Yeah, I mean, it says we're setting a public meeting date for Koval. So what is a public meeting? Is that's not a, I mean, it just said we--
I can try and answer in a non-legal way, but basically, a public meeting is an interchangeable term with public hearing. So sometimes we're used to hearing the word "public hearing," but this is, the public meeting is the actual term--
Ally, you've got Katie right behind you. I'm going to let you off the hook here.
Well, that was--
Dan, ask your question.
What is a public meeting date? Because I, Ally was starting to say it's synonymous with public hearing, but we just heard that that's not what Bruce was saying, that you're still researching whether--
In our code, it says that the, that after the planning commission's recommendation, the issue, the recommendation comes to the council at a public meeting to set the public hearing. And the public, and so that's what you're being asked to do, is to set the public hearing for Koval, the closed-record public hearing, the quasi-judicial hearing, and that's, you're being asked to set that for February 24th.
That's going to be here in the chambers. That's going to be--
Correct.
So isn't the answer to that lady that, at that time, they'll have the opportunity to speak their--
We're working through the issue, but as I've explained to you, there's two pieces to this. You're allowed, under our code, one open record hearing. That occurred before the planning commission. That develops the record. Ultimately, that is sent to the city council. That's a closed-record hearing. And the applicant has made a suggestion, and we're just working through the first phases of it, so I'm not going to provide the suggestion from the applicant. But they have had two opportunities to comment in writing. They've had opportunity to comment before the planning commission. We took about an hour of testimony. So there has been opportunities to comment. There won't necessarily be--
This is my question, is, I mean, they've had quasi-judicial instances like this, you know, AWC or MIPC or MWPC, one of those acronyms. And I'm sure they've had citizens that know something about the First Amendment. I have a problem or uncomfortableness not allowing them to speak, and it's still being quasi-judicial. And what I'm asking, Katie, is to explain to me, and therefore the public, on that sweet spot between us maintaining impartiality under quasi-judicial duty and their freedom for First Amendment to talk, they can talk about the color of the grass or whatever they want to, in this forum for three minutes. How we suppress that? And I don't think this is the right time, or maybe it is, I'm comfortable with it.
If you were a judge, you would, and if you were in appellate court, you'd only be allowed to look at the record that was created at the trial court record. That's the most apt analogy I can provide you. You wouldn't get to have the people get another shot at arguing it to the appellate, at bringing in new testimony to the appellate court. So that's the analogy. You're in a different role, and it's not suppression--
So whenever we have this public hearing, and like I said, I'm sure this has happened thousands of times here in the state of Washington under a circumstance where the public has wanted to talk. I mean, will you not say, counsel, if you have citizens speak during the public appearance, and they talk about Koval, counsel, you are not to, help me out here, attorneys, you are not to listen to them, or you are not to register what they say in the quasi-judicial proceeding that you're about to have on this next agenda? But we can't stop them from talking. I mean, that's kind of First Amendment stuff.
So the applicant has provided a suggestion, and I think where you're a little confused, too, is that the due process aspect has to do with the landowner's property, where they've made a request to the council, and the process does allow for public comment by the public on it, but you have to remember whose rights are at stake here. So it's the landowner saying, "I want to draw this plat." And I feel like, I'm getting a little uncomfortable, because I feel like we're getting right into the meat and the substantive portion of the--
We're way outside the consent calendar at this point.
So I think at this point, we just talk about what, set the date. I can explain it in more detail if you have suggestions. I'm talking to the public. I'd made this explanation to them at the planning commission. So I think you're skewing some concepts here, but we can talk about it independently. But I think at this point, we just set the date, and then I can talk more independently, and we can talk more to the hearing.
Let me have one follow-up question, just, and I'm not talking about Mike's issue, which I'm not saying it's a bad issue, but I'm not going to address that. The question of, okay, so on February 24th, when we consider this, what will we have before us? Will we have all the public testimony that went to the planning commission?
Yes. You'll have all the public testimony, all the documents-- Yes. You'll have all the public testimony, all the documents, and you will have the planning commission's recommendation to the council.
We have that, we have that one already there.
And then you'll have the staff reports. You'll have.
Can you, since, it's going to take us a while to digest that, and it's presumably all available now. Can you get that out to us this week already?
Sure.
Email the whole record out to us, so we can start working our way through that? And so, at least, even if the public isn't able to speak, they're sure that we've had the opportunity to review everything that went before the planning commission?
Absolutely. Can I just?
And I'd like to make another request.
Ma'am, ma'am, no. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make another request, that Katie provides, so that I can understand it better, how we come together, again, find that sweet spot between maintaining the impartiality of a quasi-judicial forum duty that we're supposed to do, and their right to address the council on any subject they want. Is that request understood? And I hope the council will support me on that.
I think, what I'm arriving at, and I don't want to put words in your mouth here, but what I'm arriving at is that the council needs a crash course on quasi-judicial hearings, rules, and responsibilities around that. Ideally, we would have had that before now, so that we would not all look like deer in the headlights, which is, which is where we are at the moment.
Well, no, but, but, there has to be some, Mr. Mayor.
I know, you're trying to sort of move right into.
Well, no, I just want, there has to be, I mean, there's got to be a ton of precedent with this situation. I mean, I watch CSI.
The judge says something to the effect, you're not supposed to, yeah, the judge says
something to the effect of disregard. So, the city attorney would say something if there's, if, if our citizens are exercising their First Amendment right to speak, but happen to talk about the COVOL property, city council members, you're to disregard what they say.
There's a difference, there's a different issue, Mike, Dan. I'm not, I'm not going to try to go back. But I think what's important for the council, if we're going to maintain public credibility, is that we all, we all make sure we review the record. The record, judging from this document, the record is very rich, and with a lot of testimony and a lot of written comments, all of which from, from both the applicant and from, from people who may object to the development. And it's just absolutely critical, that, I mean, there's, all the information presumably is there.
Correct.
So, whatever Katie comes up with, what's critical is that we all review the record and get that in front of us.
And the records are already available. It's also important that everybody just has.
Reviews the same record and not have outside conversations. And that's, again, to give credibility to the whole process.
So, Katie, if you can get that out to us this week, that would be.
The sooner the better, yeah. Absolutely.
But to reiterate Benson's point, which you and I have had this conversation now multiple times, it's not just here that we're not to have outside input. It's, it's any time between now and that conversation, right?
Correct.
So, to the extent that we're approached by citizens who would like to have a further conversation about it, that is inappropriate with regards to this.
We want to avoid any appearance of fairness doctrine violations, and we'll be making sure that we check in with you on that beforehand to avoid any of those concerns.
And so, will be incumbent upon us to disclose any conversations we have had, and any other input we have had. But the hope will be that we have not had that other input.
So, the information that Deputy Mayor Grous is asking for, won't that be part of the public record agenda packet?
It is the public record.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, won't it be part of the packet that you produce on February the 24th?
It will be, but I'm going to provide it earlier, and it's also on the website.
Dan's asking for it earlier.
So, we will get that to you.
And, and I just wanted to jump in here. We will, we are looking at how to handle public interest and testimony upon, on February 24th. Katie's continuing to work through that, and we'll report back to you and to the affected members of the public as to what that might look like when we, when we land it.
Thank you, Mr. City Mayor.
Okay, that was a long way around a consent calendar approval. So, we have moved Agenda Bill 4923 off of the consent calendar. All the remaining items remain. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move to Agenda Bill 4923, 2013 arterial and residential chip seal project. Close out. Mics.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to point out, well done on this, Clint. And so, I'd like, just to point out that contingency being 8%, which is a very low contingency. I think if we stay above ground, normally, it's 10%. And if we dig into the ground, we bump it up to 15%. But in that, with Clint's experience and understanding of the project, and what, what this identifies to me is that he's brought in the control of these construction projects such that he can drop the contingency from 10% to 8%. And that's a true mark of a well-managed project. So often, I get somewhat frustrated that we evaluate success on our project, measured against the benchmark of the budget, which is kind of a financial measurement versus a project measurement, that he's able to bring these projects with a confidence level of 8% instead of 10% or 15% in the process world, that's, shows good control. I hope that resonates with, with folks. So, in the process world, that shows good control, and I commend you, there you are, I commend you on that. Well done. So, without further ado, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Have at it.
I move that we accept the completed 2013 arterial and residential chip seal project and authorize staff to close out the contract.
Second.
All right. Anyone else care to speak?
I will just say that I also share, Clint, and congratulate you on both these projects for closing them out. Such good financial results, and I trust the rest of city staff will do equally well with the fire station.
Well, no, they won't. I mean, it's a budget thing, so.
Maybe we just chip seal the fire station.
Clint, I have a new project for you to be assigned to.
All right. So, Chip, the good news is you've been complimented. The bad news is you had to stay here until 7:30 to get that. But, well done, well done. All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we move to regular business, Agenda Bill 4924, police and police support 2014 to 2015 collective bargaining agreements. And, I don't know the right bill, but I'm assuming this is Chris and Ed, so Chief Holmes and Chris Eagle. Welcome.
This is Director. So, we're here tonight to seek your approval on two contracts. We've reached tentative agreement with the police guild on the police union contract and the police support union contracts. Both are two-year agreements. The police support contract provides a 3.91% overall increase to wages and benefits in 2014 for the five unit members, and a cost of living adjustment equal to 100% of the CPIW semi-annual index for 2015. On the police contract, the agreement provides a overall increase of 2.9% in 2014 of wages and benefits for 29 members, and in 2015 also provides a cost of living adjustment equal to the CPIW semi-annual index, plus also increases the education incentive pay for the unit that's commensurate with the education pay provided by comparable cities that we use for our contract negotiation comparisons. So, the most notable change, though, in the police contract is moving from a schedule of six days on, three days off, to a 12-hour shift schedule. The tentative agreement is, provides for a trial period of 21 months, that we would monitor and measure the success of this schedule change and report back on the success of the program. And I'm going to turn it over to Chief Holmes to talk about the measurement methods.
So, for the record, Ed Holmes, your police chief. So, the two basic measurement records, metrics we will use to measure the success of this would be, one, we'll take the 12-hour shift, and we'll overlay or run a hypothetical 6 and 3, the current schedule alongside of it, to look at two things, basically. We'll look at the shift coverage, so the number of officers that we have on the road under the 12-hour versus what we would have under the 6 and 3, and we anticipate more coverage under the 12s. The second measure we'll look at is actual cost of overtime to keep staffing at the minimum staffing level, which is three officers. So, at any one time, we have three officers on duty. That includes the supervisor. So, we'll look at actual overtime costs associated with keeping our staffing at the minimum under the 6 and 3, and compare that with the 12-hour shift, factoring in for and accounting for any changes in staffing. So, clearly, if we lose an officer or hire an officer, that could have an impact on the overtime costs. So, we will account for staffing changes when we look at this. So, again, look at actual costs associated with keeping us at the minimum staffing level, and then the number of officers on the road under the 6 and 3 as compared with the 12-hour shift. We plan to do this, as Chris mentioned, for 21 months, basically, starting around April 1st of this year for the rest of this year, and then into 2015, which is when this contract would expire. And along the way there, we plan on quarterly, quarterly check-ins with the Public Safety Committee to talk about, we have a standing agenda item typically at the Public Safety Committee, which is talking about crime statistics. We can also add this as a standing agenda item for the quarterly check-ins, letting the Public Safety Committee know how this 12-hour shift model is going.
Ready for questions? Okay. Debbie, Mike, your eyebrows went up, but not hands, so you're after Debbie.
Thanks very much for the presentation. Just a quick question. You're moving from a six-on, three-off. What is the rough equivalent, then, for the 12-hour shift? How many 12-hours on, 12-hours off before they have a more extended?
12-hours on, 12-hours off. They'll do that for three. So, they work three days, then have four days off, then have four days on and four days off. So, it's three on, three off, four on, four off.
And then back to three again?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Chief, why does it matter that you, you make amendments depending upon staffing changes? If what you're doing is, you're running scenarios, you're running a side-by-side scenario. So, it's not as if you're comparing to last year with last year's staffing. You're, as I understood, your model is that you're going to run the 12-hour shift, and then you're going to run the numbers using the old 8-3 or 3-8 shift with the same, why would you do it with the same number? So, the staffing is immaterial, isn't it?
Well, I want to look back at the actual, the actual costs we've experienced under the 6 and 3, the actual costs in past years that we've actually experienced keeping our shift coverage at three officer minimum.
I think I might be kind of uncomfortable with that, and like the way you briefed it originally. The way you briefed it originally, you said you were going to run a 12-hour, a 2-12 shift, and then compare it if you would have run a 3-8 shift.
We will, we will do both. We will have a 6 and 3, sort of a hypothetical 6 and 3, that we will run concurrent to the actual 12-hour shifts. And we'll see what experience we would have. It's actually a little bit, maybe this is a deep, more detailed conversation, better left for a Public Safety Committee meeting. But, we will run into scenarios where we just wouldn't give someone a day off under the 6 and 3. There's going to be some assumptions we'll have to make under that hypothetical 6 and 3 as we run that concurrent with the 12s. There'll be scenarios that we just, we wouldn't send certain people, certain number of people to training under the 6 and 3 that we're able to under the 12, for example. So, I'm interested in actual numbers that we had to spend to keep us at the three officer minimum, under, historically, under the 6 and 3, and compare that to actual dollars we have to spend to keep the staffing level at the three officer minimum under the 12. So, we'll get a comparison of actual dollars spent for the three officer minimum under both schedules.
All right. I'm a little bit, I said my piece. I don't see why, if you're comparing, why staffing, making amendments to staffing matter if you're, if you're going, which I think, as a council member, is more meaningful, if you're running the, the 2-12 shift, and then you compare it as if it was a, do we say a 3-8, or a, we say a 3-8 shift?
Six and 3, 6 on, 3 off.
Oh, 6-3 shift and change, but I'll look for that. I have a question about the mechanics. You've got a, I don't have my notes here as far as the hours. You have a 2,024-hour year, or what was the, with the 3-6, how many hours in a year?
Well, 20, 2080. And that's what, we use the 2080 for basically payroll purposes.
Right, 2080, and then the, the new number in the year is what, 2,184?
Correct.
2,184.
Less, less the Kelly days.
Got it. But then you said in there that after 2,184, so on the 2,185th hour, that fifth hour is at one and a half, right?
If they work over 12 hours or work on a day off, then yes. They, they work 104 more hours in a year under the 12-hour shift model. So, under the 12-hour shift model, an officer will work 104 more hours in a year. And for that, they'll get 144 off. Because right now, if they work anything over 2,080, they get either paid time and a half or comp time at time and a half. And so, under this model, most officers work well over 104 extra hours in a year. Right now, under the 6 and 3, they work more than 104 hours extra in a year. Most of them take the majority of that time as overtime. Some take exclusively in comp time. What we're doing here is basically programming in the first 104 hours at comp time. We're saying it's going to, it has to be comp time, and it can't be used on a thin shift that would create overtime.
Okay. So, the way the packet read was, the 2,185th hour would be at one and a half?
Sure. Yes, I, I understand your analysis.
Okay, but you know, so that's not the way it is, it sounds like. It sounds like the way it is, is you work a 12-hour shift, and then if you work 14 hours, those two go toward Kelly hours, or Kelly days, until you get 104 hours, is it?
Any, any year, under the 12-hour shift, an officer will work 104 more hours than they do under the 6 and 3. And typically, anything over 2,080, which you find under the 6 and 3, is paid at time and a half or earned at time and a half under comp time. And like I say, most officers work well in excess of that 104 hours. And so, they could, I suppose, take all of it in comp time, but most of them take it in overtime pay, although some take exclusively in comp time. But most take a mix, comp time and overtime. So, we're basically saying the first 104 extra hours the officers work in a year must be taken as comp time. You could look at it, we call it a Kelly day, and you can't use that Kelly day to time off if it would create overtime, if a shift is below the three officer minimum.
Okay, I'll do it from a different direction. So, if you work 16 hours, if you work a 16-hour day at the first of the year, then those four hours will go toward comp time, not, go toward the Kelly days. They'll go toward the Kelly days.
No, under, let me try this one more time. Under the six, under the 12-hour shifts, so they're just work, if an officer worked no extra hours at all, just only, always only worked the 12-hour shift that they were scheduled to work, they would work 104 more hours in a year. And for that, they get 12 Kelly days.
Right.
Now, if the first day of the year, they happen to work four hours extra, that would be in excess of those Kelly days, in excess of the extra 104 hours.
Okay.
So, that would be paid at overtime or taken as comp time.
Okay. So, one of the benefits of this, do you anticipate, since we have shifts with five officers instead of shifts with three officers, do you anticipate more boots on the ground, if you will, or more patrol cars out there?
Yes. Typically, now, shifts are scheduled at either four or three officers out of the shoots. And under the 12-hour model, they are all scheduled at five, provided we have full staffing. They're all scheduled at five. I think one at six if we have the 21 officers in the, in the patrol mix. So, yes, to answer your question, I anticipate more officers assigned to each shift. So, more boots on the ground, as you characterize it as.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to take a turn here, and I want to go up to a much higher overall level for a minute and ask a couple of the questions that we asked earlier, just so that we're not so far down in the weeds as we, as we try and, you know. that we're not so far down in the weeds as we try and help the public...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have that tendency.
Help the public understand what's going on here. So my first question is, this shift from eight-hour shifts to 12-hour shifts, has it been done anywhere else? Do you have reason to believe that it's a good idea?
Yes, it's been done by quite a few of the surrounding agencies, and yes, they have success with that.
And if I understood your response to Mike's question correctly, the end result, or one of the results of this will be that we will have more officers on the street on average than we do today?
Yes. Every shift is assigned five instead of four or three out of the shoots before anybody takes a time off or is in training. But right away, we start with a higher number.
And so you end up also with less flex, with more flexibility to avoid overtime because you've got deeper staff at any given time?
Correct.
Is that right?
We anticipate less spending in overtime.
Okay. And I think this is, well, this is for you or Chris, you handle it as you will. The cost of salaries is going up. Tell me, tell the public, are you comfortable with where we landed in terms of this negotiation? How does it compare with, you know, where... Is it a reasonable deal, I guess, is really the question?
I think it is. We look at our comparable cities, and we go with, you know, we pay at the 50th percentile. And in fact, we were able to negotiate paying the education incentive in year two, whereas they're behind now in the education incentive. But through negotiations, we postponed bringing that pay up until year two of the contract. So yes, I think it's a good deal.
Do I need to add to that? And finally, if the 12-hour shift idea doesn't work, we have some option?
Yes, it's written in the MOU that we would then revert back to the six and three model.
Okay. Anyone else? Weeds or high-level, your choice? Debbie and then Dan.
I have a question. There's Exhibit A on page 21, which is called the Early Retirement Incentive Worksheet. I'm just wondering if that's standard for most police officers? Is that paid out in a lump sum? And then just interested, since it is for employees who have reached age 55, does that mean that when you're older than 55, somehow you're perceived to be contributing less and we don't want you?
No.
It's like, 55 is not as far off from me as I once thought, so I'm taking this personally.
Yeah, that early retirement clause in there, that was developed, I believe, in 1996 when we reduced the number of supervisors. We had, I think, three lieutenants at the time, and through negotiations in 1996, I believe, that was introduced at that time with the union. So that's nothing new. I don't know that it's in other contracts. It was negotiated, I think, 18-ish years ago at the time. So that's been in there for that long, and it was not by design aimed at inferring a reduced output or value on more senior officers.
So we're not promoting this, per se? Promoting people pursue early retirement? Or we are?
Well, under the police and firefighter retirement system, 53 is the earliest age you can retire without any penalty. So, I mean, those are DRS rules that they put in play versus 65 under the PERS system. So that isn't something that we came up with, that's DRS rules.
Thanks. Dan? And then Benson?
Can you get us, you know, Chris, or at, say, for the last 24 months, the by-month, the total number of overtime hours and total number hours of comp time, just so we understand from an historical perspective, when we review this again down the road, what the baseline is for this? Now, I see what you propose as a metric, and I'm not sure, sitting here tonight, what that will end up looking like. So I would like to at least be able to know that you have available that kind of historical data that you can provide us already, so we have that with us to look at.
A look back of two years?
Yeah.
You can do that.
And I'm not looking for dollars spent, because I don't want to have to adjust by rate. I'm talking about the actual number of hours of overtime, the actual number of hours of comp time, the resulted from overtime, just so we can see, you know, compare that to the Kelly days that we're now having to give. So that's possible?
Yes.
I support that staff time.
And I was just going to add in that I foresee us working with the Public Safety Committee as we start this to develop and understand the metric, understand what information council members need to help to look at that metric.
And I, with no disrespect to the Public Safety Committee, this, I would like to see that information provided to the full council. It doesn't have to be at meetings, but I would like to, in addition to the Public Safety Committee, have it come back up to the full council. And I would hope it would be something that, you're going to start this in April?
Yes.
That, starting maybe two months later, you can already produce the first report so we can see where you're heading on this and understand what the data is and just... It would be just, it would be very useful over the first few months of this, so we can understand how you're doing this comparison. Last thing I want to do is a year from now, have you sit in front of us and provide us information, and we sit there and tell you, well, why did you do it this way? It's not in your interest or our interest, so...
Yeah, and we've talked at a staff level. What's a good way to get this information to the full council? And I'm not sure, I mean, you can choose that. I know we do committee reports at the end of the council meetings, and different committees report to the full council, and that might be a good vehicle to use for one of the committee members to report back. And I'm around if you have further questions at those reports. But I've committed to making these monthly, quarterly check-ins a standing agenda item with the Public Safety Committee folks, and they can report to the full council. I think would work well, but if you have different ideas, certainly we're open to...
Well, I guess the first thing I'd like to do is make sure we have the historical data, see what format it comes in. And then, secondly, at least, you should definitely report to the Public Safety Committee, but I would like to, at the end of May, for example, just, so maybe we can even talk about during our June planning session, just understand what the metric is looking like so we can just make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I'm interested in having everybody clear on what we're doing, and so, as soon as we get enough to report on that I'm comfortable to report on, and obviously, the longer reporting period, then the more sound that data is versus small bites, but I'm happy to get it as soon as we can to the committee and the council, however we want to work that.
Sure.
In the city.
Benson?
Yeah, this actually dovetails into what Dan was talking about. I guess, I may know what you're saying, at the end of the trial period, after the end of the 21st month, what are we looking for, for you to determine that we're going back to the six-three, or we're able to stay with a 12-hour shift? Is it a matter of just looking at the overtime, or is it, what are we looking at?
I guess two main things I'll be interested in is, yes, the overtime, or the amount of extra hours that officers did or did not work to keep at a minimum staffing level, and the number of officers we actually have out on the street every shift. So there's a money side of this, the extra hours worked, keep track of that. But then also, is the community seeing more officers out there under the 12-hour shift model? Those are the two main things I'll be looking at.
I have another question.
Okay.
So I think Councilmember Long kind of didn't do what Councilmember Gross wanted you to do. So how long, when does this happen? When do you start it?
April.
Okay, you started in April. How long before you get into your routine? Because I wouldn't want, I mean, it's not going to happen overnight to where you're in your routine. You're going to learn tricks of the trade and whatnot on how to implement this.
It will be implemented April, actually, maybe a day or two before.
There you go. When will you hit your stride after implementing it?
He'll have it right away, because it's, he has to go to the 12-12 shift. It's a hard cutoff.
This is a hard line. Officers will one day be working the six and three, and the next day, everybody will be working the 12-hour shift.
Okay, so April, April, May, June, the end of June, you'll have a report for us?
The first, it'll be at the second Public Safety Committee meeting, because we have our first quarter's Public Safety Committee meeting, the 26th of this month. So it'd be, it would be during the second quarter's Public Safety Committee meeting. Date yet to be set, and we can do that at the end of our meeting later this month, make sure everybody has their calendars.
No, I mean, definitely, Mayor Gross has interest in bringing this to the council. Do we want to bring this to the council as a...
What I said is that it should definitely go to the Public Safety Committee, but I was, I would hope that the data could come to the full council sometime in May, and then if we choose to talk about it at the planning session in June, we can do that.
All right. That's fine. Sounds good. Okay. Is there anybody who needs to recuse themselves on this issue?
I have no questions. I'm not voting. Yes, I'm recusing myself.
All right. Any discussion, Tana?
I would like to move something.
Oh, yeah, you need a motion, don't you?
I would not like to move off that one. I'd like to move to authorize the city manager to sign the Police Collective Bargaining Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding with the Mercer Island Police Guild for the period of January 1, 2014, through December 31, 2015.
Second. Do we need to keep going?
No.
So, second.
Discussion?
Yes. Just, I was ready to go there. Just a couple of comments here. You know, I think the AA degree as an incentive is kind of a relic of years past. I think our force and the communities have developed to where, even it's on the web page, that an AA for your police officers is basically a minimum prerequisite, so it's incorrect to call it, to be reimbursed or to be an incentive. If it's a minimum qualification to become an officer on the force, then it's not an incentive. And so maybe that's something for, obviously, it's not going to happen this contract, but next contract, to reevaluate that and truly put money into an incentive that improves the force above and beyond the minimum qualifications to go on to the force. The second thing I have is, you know, I'm trying to, in my position here, trying to focus on outcomes, outcomes. And the bottom line is, is that if, way back in January 1st, 11th, if we were to look and see where we would be, given the CPI, would be around an increase of, given the 2011 CPI, 2012 CPI, 2013 CPI, would be a salary increase of about 7.05% versus what we have now of 9.28%, between about that 9.3%. And that's a function of the process that we have with its challenges. I mean, I'm unsure of who the stakeholders are. We have many stakeholders that we have to look at, for the citizens, the tax-paying citizens, our police force, staff, and their good work on bringing this. So I'm conflicted whether the salary increase from 2011 to 2014, let me see, right, it's a generous increase. It's a generous increase relative to CPI. And most of that's, that's all I'm going to say about that. Finally, I'm excited about this new 12-hour shift. I mean, just, to me, we're going to have a grand opportunity to do something about getting more officers on the street and patrolling. Five on a shift versus three on a shift. And I'm excited to see what happens with this. And I hope, Chief, that you're successful in showing that, my gut feel is that it will be, it will get more officers on the beat, per se. And so I have.
Okay. Anyone else? Dan?
I want to offer an amendment that the, and so it'd be at the end of the motion, and add the words, "And direct the city manager to develop and implement accurate metrics to evaluate the economic and officer coverage consequences of the 12-hour shift schedule." So I'll repeat that again. To direct the city manager to develop and implement accurate metrics to evaluate the economic and officer coverage consequences of the 12-hour shift schedule. Second. If I can speak to the amendment?
Please do.
Yeah, it's, all it is, is just, it's just formalizing what's in the agenda bill and make it clear to the council is very interested in this and making sure that Noel gives it the priority, that I'm sure he will.
So that means you want to bring it to the council, then? I mean, that's basically what the amendment does, so...
Well, no, it doesn't say that.
Doesn't say that. It's just time to develop the metrics, and I'm sure he'll report back to us.
Anyone else? So I, I have no problem with the concept. I have to say, though, that I think you just said, "Staff, did you do this?" And they said, "Yes." And then you said, "I don't believe you, I'm going to make you." And to me, that's not a conversation that I think we need to have, because I think when they say they're going to do it, they're going to do it. So I'll vote against it, just on the principle that I, it flummoxes me when we, when we don't trust our staff.
No, it's, and it's not to be interpreted that. It is just making sure that the community, when people read the minutes of this meeting, that the public understands that the city council was very concerned by this issue and wants to, and wants to put a premium on measuring the effectiveness of this. It is, it's just creating a record on this issue, and so I think it's important. It's a big change, and I think it's important that the community know that we are, we are very keen to monitor this.
That's not the way I interpreted the amendment. I interpreted that amendment that that's what they do. They, the council, or the staff, being a professional staff, they're, they always evaluate outputs with metrics. That's what they do. The way I interpreted that amendment is that since the deputy mayor made it an amendment to be approved by the council, that he wants the council to have visibility, and he wants the staff, and somewhat of an implied statement, he wants the staff to come back to show, given those metrics, where the performance of the new plan was.
Debbie?
So I mean, it definitely brings it up to a different level, a higher level.
Okay. Debbie?
Couple of key points. First one, I took the amendment to be more of a codification of the discussion that was here. I would apologize if it was interpreted as being a question or challenging of staff's competence or intent. Again, I just see that as, as a record that this council is taking responsibility to review the numbers based on circumstances sometimes we often can't see or anticipate. So for my side, please don't take that as a challenge or a question of your professionalism. I also wanted to go back and comment on Councilmember Seer's statements regarding CPI versus, you know, the total compensation increase. And I think we all need to remember that when it comes to employment, and particularly competitive employment, it's not about the CPI, it's about the relative skills, the relative value of the services being provided, the community and markets around. And I know that there has been extreme due diligence done and research. So the extent to which the information you come back with, I have great deal of confidence that that is reflecting what is necessary in a competitive market to keep the police staff that we have and value so much, as even illustrated in the Mercer Island Reporter this week in a very entertaining context, for those of you who read that particular article. So again, I'm more than comfortable supporting a contract that goes beyond CPI and ensures that we have the best and brightest for Mercer Island.
Anyone else on the amendment? Benson?
Yeah, I didn't interpret, or when I heard Dan's amendment, I see it more as just asking for the accountability, and I think that's something that, you know, is to be expected. And I don't think that's, again, a challenge to the integrity and professionalism of our staff. I also want to commend our staff, actually, for doing a good job in negotiating the union contracts with the representatives of the union. I think, again, it's a trial, but I think if it proves to be successful and we have more patrol officers on the island, I think that is great. I think that ensures the security, or the sense of security that the public really enjoys, and that's something that I think the city council owes our citizens to make sure that we put public safety first. So I appreciate all the efforts that you've done to reach this agreement with the union. So I appreciate all the efforts that you've done to reach this agreement with the union. And I also, again, want to echo what Debbie alluded to, and that is, even with the CPI increase that you have, you're still at 50%. And so, you know, some people would argue that we should be paying more than 50% because of the cost that is for public safety. But the fact is that you're at 50%, and that's, again, to be commended. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, on the amendment, does anyone need a rereading of it? Addition of, I've got about two-thirds of it. So, Ally, maybe you can reread it, just for format. Okay, never mind. Dan, could you reread it? It's amending to the end of the motion.
Yeah, "And direct the city manager to develop and implement accurate metrics to evaluate the economic and officer coverage consequences of the 12-hour shift schedule."
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, motion carries. We go back to the original motion, which is...
You abstained.
I abstained.
Yeah. Go back to the original motion, authorize the city manager to sign the police collective bargaining agreement and memorandum of understanding with the police island, Mercer Island Police Guild for the period of January 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2015, and direct the city manager to develop and implement accurate metrics to evaluate [inaudible]. Because that's the part I didn't get. Any further discussion on that? Tana?
Just quickly, I'd like to also point out that another thing I'm looking forward to with the 12-hour shift is not only boots on the ground, as now we're saying, for crime prevention and crime follow-up, but also for our island with emergency preparedness. That to have five officers on the island in a situation where we might be secluded, it's, that's a great increase and gives me a little more peace of mind as well. So, thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's opportunity for another motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the police support collective bargaining agreements with the Mercer Island Police Guild for the period of January 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2015.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excellent.
Abstaining.
Abstentions, thank you. I guess I am supposed to ask for that, am I not? Can we do one more before anybody says they need a break? Okay, so we move to Agenda Bill 4921, Senior Advisory Board Transition, welcome, Cindy.
Good evening, members of Congress. I want to speak with you about Agenda Bill 4921. And this agenda bill is requesting that, talking about the transition of the senior advisory board and requesting that we move from a senior advisory board to a more integrated representation of seniors on the island, to having them join the Youth and Family Services Board and having it become the Youth, Seniors and Families Services Advisory Board. I didn't realize that was so small. Is there any, make that any bigger? Does anybody know? That it would be quite a bit bigger and that it would be helpful.
Oh, very good. Good, can I just move it down in the air? Do you know?
What's that? You were just trying to challenge us, whether we're seniorized or not.
I think you're just trying to torture us with the history of what we've done with this issue.
There is a lot of history to this issue and it's really kind of come full circle. It was brought up by a group of citizens who are really concerned that we have representation for seniors on the island. And now, when we have a senior advisory board, they really recommend that it go into a different format, but still be representation for seniors on the island. And it was, this recommendation is made by a group of people that really put a lot of effort into the advisory board. So, just briefly, in March of 2005, a group of citizens came and spoke to the council just asking for some sort of representation. And at that time, City Manager Conrad gave this issue to myself and Pete Mayer, the director for the Department of Parks and Recreation, asked us to go take a look at it, vet the issue, see what kinds of representation, we could come up with some examples. We came back to the council in December of 2006 with Agenda Bill 4147, and we put forth a couple of options, have it with this YFS advisory board, have a senior advisory board, and have it report to city departments. And at the time, the citizen group really wanted to have it be a commission, wanted to have seven members on trial basis, and have it report to the city council. They really wanted to have a different type of accountability and have a mechanism where they can speak with electeds. And that's what the city council went with. They said, "Okay, let's give this, let's give this a shot." So we came back on Agenda Bill 4150 in January of 2007 and had an ordinance for one-year trial period of a senior commission, so it would meet quarterly, seven members, 55 and over. And they were to study, review, and make recommendations to the city council. And during that time, for that year, the next, in April 2008, they came back with an interim report, and then in November of '08, they came back with their year-end review. At that time, it was staffed by two direct-line staffs, the geriatric specialist and then the person who runs the senior programming at Parks and Recreation. And they did some good work together. It was a group, they were set up in the summer of 2007, they were oriented in September. They immediately set up a model really kind of similar to the Bellevue Network on Aging. They had five sub-communities that they were looking at, and they just, they began taking on issues. The group was very wide at that point, and so the group had a hard time getting around issues that they could really have an impact on. When they came back at the end of their year trial, they had three recommendations. One was to have a senior learning opportunity, take a look at working with emergency preparedness so they can reach out to fragile seniors on the island. And the third was to have some kind of mechanism where they could have input into legislative issues for seniors. So those were far-reaching. I think at the time, they also, we were asked as department directors, did we like, was this working, was this an appropriate mechanism for senior input? And at the time, we thought, well, it's far-reaching, we can't have a lot of impact on these issues, we still think that there should be an internal mechanism. But at that, but at the time, the commission decided, let's continue as a senior commission and make the role a bit more narrow, and have them give feedback on the Departments of Recreation, Parks and Recreation, and the Departments of Youth and Family Services. So that was at the end. From 2008 to 2011, that was really the bulk of the work of that group. And it, they took a break there, so it would have been about a year and a third. And it was rocky. They had a lot of turnover of that group, there was a lot of, people thought that some people had agendas, some people had more skills to do community work than others. And with its population who retired naturally, there's a lot of traveling and going and seeing grandkids and other issues that came up, so it was really hard to get consistent attendance. So we learned a lot about doing that type of body. The other issue that came up was that a lot of, some of those members would go speak directly with council instead of speaking with staff, so it was hard to get everybody working on the same, on the same agenda. And it had a number of resignations, that was really. So we came back in 2011, about maybe the six months prior to that, myself and Bruce Fletcher got together and decided, okay, if this is not working, what would work? What other models could we look at? We came back in January of 2011 and we asked, it was a full review, and we said, you know, this is how this group is doing, we've had a lot of resignations, and what we really think would be helpful is if we could have this group of individuals, if we could recruit and discontinue a senior commission, if we could establish an advisory board, make it nine members, and have them report to us as directors and give feedback specifically to things that as a city we can handle. So that was what we moved to in 2011. From 2011 until just recently, this past fall, we've had a senior advisory board, and that was changed again in August. We recruited the following, following spring, I believe. And that group was a very cohesive group. They took on looking at what were the issues on the island. Each year, they reviewed the services of both departments, they gave feedback, they gave suggestions, they really did what they were tasked to do. And they vetted other issues as well. And when somebody would come to them and say, "We can take this issue on," or "We can't," or "This is the person to whom you can go speak about that issue." So it was a really well-functioning board. Just recently, in September, when they were to regroup, because they're off for the summer, the group discussed, because one member brought up, that he thought, although they do good work, that he wasn't sure that they needed a whole advisory board set aside for seniors. And that he'd like to see the senior advisory board be part of the Youth and Family Services Board, because they review services and they don't need a full advisory board to do that. And for those larger regional issues, they wanted to go to the other bodies that represent seniors, Eastside Seniors, and join them. So he, a member of the group brought that to the senior advisory group in September. All of the members supported him in that and asked, me as the staff, how could we pursue that? I spoke with Mitch Conrad at the time. He said, "Go to the Youth and Family Services Advisory Board, see what they think about it, see if you can get both boards on the same page, and then we'll take the steps to proceed as I'm doing now." So in October, I went to the Youth and Family Services Advisory Board. I brought them up to speed, who is this group, what do they do? And that what they'd like is to have four designated seats of the 12 seats that are adults on that board, they'd like four designated for seniors 65 and over. And that's where they'd like to have their mechanism. For a lot of these people, they're very, they're very active, and they really saw, felt that they wanted not input just on senior issues, but on all island issues, having to do with Parks and Recreation and Youth and Family Services, and they really enjoy doing that with an integrated population of every age. So that's where, so that's bringing it up to today. All members of the senior advisory board support it, the Youth and Family Services Board supports it, and I support it as well. And what you have in Exhibit 1 is an ordinance requesting that you approve an ordinance that would repeal the senior advisory board and amend the Youth and Family Services Board, allowing four seats to be designated for seniors.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions? Dan?
Just curious why the deletion in page four from the ordinance in paragraph A, that the middle part about the city manager and the mayor designating people?
I'm not there yet.
Paragraph A, there's text that was deleted in the middle of it, which I was just curious why that was deleted. Page four?
Page four.
3.54030A.
30A, deleted, okay. Voting members? And you're asking me, please say it again?
I can answer that for you, Cindy. We don't have ex officio members. So we don't, we don't have that, members without authority to vote. I guess that's what you said, Cindy. Right.
I didn't answer, I was just getting there, but is that, is that why, Katie?
Correct.
Okay.
I have, this microphone is not working.
All right, please.
I have.
Hello, I'm here. There's my answer. I had suggested deleting this language. This ordinance was put into effect in 1974 and has gone through many iterations. And so that's kind of why we're cleaning it up, saying that there are 24 members. And then this notion of an ex officio member that the city manager designates, we have moved into a staff liaison model administratively for all of our boards and commissions. So this was kind of, because Youth and Family Services, the board was established before the department, it served a different purpose. So there was a staff member that was appointed to help run that board, and that was the ex officio member. So we're just removing that language since it's older and doesn't fit the current policy that we have.
Other questions? Benson?
This is perhaps directly involved. And it's not a big issue for me, but on B, paragraph B, and actually on C, there's a reference just to his successor, you know, and his services. Is it a big issue to have it more gender neutral, like such members or something like that?
Again, old language, we can probably, with the council's blessing, clean up the, clean up the gender neutral, the blessing provided. Thank you.
Wait a second.
And there's a, there's a lot of places in our...
I sure don't, I sure don't, but I...
There's a lot of that kind of cleanup that needs to be done.
It sounds like we're doing it piece by piece, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a, I'm going to make a comment, I'll couch it in the form of a question eventually here, and it's a little bit humorous. So the governor instituted recently a entity, which he called the CLU, which was the Climate Legislative Executive Work Group. CLU flows off the tongue pretty easily and sort of ties together with what the entity was. Some things do and some things don't. And I have to say that I have, literally have I seen something that flowed off the tongue less smoothly than YSFS. So Cindy, while I love the work you do and I love the idea of doing this, I beg of you, find something different from YS, YSFS as the acronym for this. You're just torturing us with that.
Can I say something about that?
Yes, please do.
Yeah, in your, several people have said that. So when we have to change the bylaws, so these, if this is approved, we'll go to that board, they will redo the bylaws, and hopefully they'll take that on, the name.
All right.
Be advisor, like the advisor court.
Can we make a move?
I move to suspend the city council rules of procedure 5.2, requiring a second reading for an ordinance.
Second.
Comment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Move to adopt proposed ordinance number 14C-02, repealing MICC 3.39, senior advisory board, and amending MICC 3.54, Youth and Family Services Board.
Second.
Discussion.
I will speak to the motion. I think this is one of those great efficiency and streamlining things that will hopefully allow the staff to focus on other things as well that you see fit, so I think that's wonderful. And I also think it is actually a really nice intergenerational interaction for our community that reflects, I think, our community's values and families and realities. So I think this will hopefully be a great change.
Mike, and then Debbie.
Great, I'm real happy to see this change. And I think the seniors that are part of the YFS with those young adults there will gain as much from that dialogue. And I'm real excited for this, and I was kind of hoping it would happen many years ago, but I'm glad that it's finally here. So if I just wait long enough, things will come around my way, I'm thinking.
Debbie?
I too do very much support this, you know, the intergenerational and the sort of cross-fertilization components of it. The one piece of this that has always been in my mind goes back to when I returned to the island and I was single, and I had no children, and I felt very isolated from the rest of the community. Not so far as the values, but in a lot of the vocabulary and assumptions. And as the housing stock changes on this island and the demographics change, and we perhaps see more single people, be they young or senior, I would like to see us somehow incorporate that, whether it be in the title per se, or specifically in the way some of the wording sits, but principally, and then the extent to which it needs to be formalized in, you know, after some experience or some time. But I don't, at this point, want that young and perhaps growing demographic on this island to feel that they do not have the same level of access to many of the services, terrific services, that come from your team.
I'll pass it on.
Jane?
Well, perhaps we need a Mercer Island Singles Group to start. Anyway, I'm sorry, I do approve of this change. I've seen a lot of changes in how we best serve seniors, because we have really two different kinds of seniors, younger, more active, you know, mountain climbers, bicyclers, walkers, active, and then more fragile seniors. And they're not the same, their needs are very different. And I would hope the change we're enacting will include both those types of seniors. We've had, over the years, the Council on Aging, all sorts of different ways of approaching the needs of seniors. But I think this is a good move, and I would hope that the four representatives on this group will represent both the fragile seniors and the more active, youngest seniors. So I think... So I think it's a very positive change.
Any else? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Cindy, thank you very much. And sir who came this evening, I don't know your name, forgive me, but thank you for coming too. I assume you were part of--
Oh, you know, you guys, I completely forgot. This is Charles Neff, Charlie Neff, and he was a member of our board. And he was one of the nine people, incredible people, who did so much good thinking and really took the spirit of what they were supposed to do, thought well of it and thought about a transition. So Charlie, and for the other eight people, I can't thank them enough. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. And thanks for sticking with us through other issues of less interest.
I thank the council for their action. I think this is moving us in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we're at 90 minutes since we started. We've got one more agenda bill, other business, and then executive session. Break now or break later? What do you prefer?
Later.
Later, okay. Hope Mike says ye--
I'll go now.
Come back at 8:42. Come back at 8:42.
All right. Meeting will return to order. We move to Agenda Bill 4919, 2015 Comprehensive Plan Update Draft Scope of Work. Scott Greenberg, welcome.
Thank you, Scott Greenberg, Development Services Group Director. First of all, this is not a quasi judicial item. It's legislative, just to make that clear. Why are we here? Basically because RCW, should be 36.78130 bracket five, requires all cities and counties planning under the Growth Management Act to, and here's the key, review and if needed, revise our comprehensive plans and development regulations on or before June 30th, 2015. So just as a bit of a refresher, and we'll get into more detail on this when we bring the comprehensive plan back for your review, on how this all fits together. The Growth Management Act, which is a state law, informs regional planning policies such as Vision 2040 and Transportation 2040. You heard a little bit about these earlier this evening. Those in turn, as well as the Growth Management Act, help inform the King County countywide planning policies. And then all of those have some influence and inform our own local comprehensive plan. So as we update our comprehensive plan, we have to be looking upward, if you will, to those other three levels of documentation. For the draft scope of work, which is Exhibit One of your Agenda Bill, the first thing we have to do is define what are we going to be doing to do this mandatory comprehensive plan update? What is our scope of work? There are several things that sort of influence our recommendation to you and to the Planning Commission on what the scope of work should entail. First of all, recognizing that Mercer Island is basically a built-out community. Yes, there is growth occurring both in the town center and outside of the town center, but essentially it's a built-out community and we don't have the same level of issues that places like Bothell or Duval or even King County have with lots of land to expand growth into. The draft scope of work, in our estimation, really reflects a modest level of effort that focuses on updates of data and information to begin with. In addition, staff will propose policy changes where needed to maintain or achieve consistency with those state, countywide, and regional planning policies. And then finally, the council and the Planning Commission have ability to make other desired policy changes. So just so I'm clear on this, this update doesn't have to be just changing data and reacting to the data. If there are other policies or issues that the council would like to look at as part of this comprehensive plan update, you certainly have the ability to do so. So in addition to the consistency that I spoke about just a moment ago, we will be updating our growth targets and our buildable lands analysis. These are two very important items that will sort of set the tone for our land use element, transportation element, and housing element. So data-driven exercise, and we'll bring that to you at an appropriate time to take a look at. Part of that also is updating our housing inventory. It's another requirement of the Growth Management Act. And along with that, housing needs and housing strategies. That's where Arch will help. Arthur Sullivan was here earlier tonight, and that's part of the Arch Work Program, is actually help us to do that level of work. A couple of things that we believe the council, or we're going to recommend that the council discuss and spend some time on, is the island's transportation level of service. You've heard a little bit about level of service on Island Crest Way in relation to a proposed daycare proposal. You're aware of transportation issues, not only internally on the island, but, you know, we do get traffic from off the island that influences what we do here on the island. And then also, I know that sustainability and economic development are two areas that the council has interest in. So we're proposing to put that in the work program, so you would be able to take a look at those. In terms of the schedule, and this is the same exhibit that you have as Exhibit Number Two, and it's kind of hard to read on the screen, we're proposing to bring a full draft of the updated comprehensive plan for the Planning Commission to review this fall. So that by extension means that the staff work will occur, is already starting to occur, at least in terms of data gathering, but the staff work will occur between now and October. Planning Commission will review it this fall, make their recommendation to the city council, and then your time to review the draft plan will be the first quarter of 2015. And our state mandated deadline is June 30th, 2015. So council should be done with their work by June 30th, 2015, so we can submit the finished document to the state. The next steps in this process, what we're here tonight for is we're just looking for your direction on this scope of work. It's a fairly general scope of work. I'll get into the questions in a second, but we will then take your direction and bring it to the Planning Commission in probably March, maybe late February. It sort of depends on schedules. The Planning Commission will then make a recommendation to you on their work program. You do this every year. And then you'll approve the Planning Commission's work program in March or April of this year. And then that will establish the comprehensive plan update scope of work. So the questions that we have, a couple of questions for you to ponder this evening, is the scope of work on Exhibit One, is that the right level of effort? Do you see anything that you'd like to add to that scope of work? Or anything, if we have the ability to, that you'd like to remove? And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or listen to your discussion.
Okay, Mike.
So Scott, I would like a presentation or an option of maybe a review light, if that's possible. It looks like you have a very comprehensive and thorough review, and I compliment you on that, but, you know, there's a cost to that, both in your staff time and dollars going toward it. I would very seriously entertain if you could do a review light, meaning the comp plan is good. It's fine. It's fine. I don't see many, many changes, or I should say, I'm concerned if there are going to be many, many changes to that.
So, thank you for that. My intent is that this does represent a review light, because part of what we're required to do under the GMA is both review and update if necessary. So a lot of this is review, so I'll give you a really good example. The utilities element. We have update general location and capacity of existing and proposed utilities. We may find, once we get into that, that we have to change two or three things, and that's it. So that doesn't imply that there's a lot of work with that, but it's sort of checking the boxes to make sure that we've adequately looked at everything. But I totally understand what you're saying. I agree with you, and that's what the intent is, that it is a review light. At this point, we can't see any major changes that we would be recommending. Again, we haven't really gotten into it, but I just don't see anything that needs a lot of changing at this point.
The next thing that I would ask you is, and that was one of your first slides, I must have seen consistency five times on this.
Sure.
And that goes back to the theme that I talked about during our study session. I'm not overly concerned about being consistent with the regional plans, the regional plans that are with a paintbrush. We have unique circumstances here on the island. We're a wonderful community, recognized nationally. You know, if I wake up 20 years from now and Mercer Island looks like Mercer Island does today, I think I would be a very content citizen. So I ask you not, unlike the slide that you presented, I ask you not to overemphasize the need to be consistent with upper-level planning guides. On the contrary, I think GMA says that, for instance, growth will pay for growth, and the GMA talks about level of services will not be degraded with growth or change and whatnot. So I ask that you look at where our level of services are and question whether consistency with upper-level planning documents are in the best interests of Mercer Islanders.
Okay. Debbie.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. The first one, just wondering generally how intentional this list is, because when I read through sections particularly land use element and housing element, some of them kind of jump out at you, you think, huh, what would that mean for Mercer Island, such as identify sufficient land for housing? You know, we are fairly finite. So when I look at this list, I'm almost wondering if this is just sort of a blueprint taken from someplace else, or you actually, if there's some specific intent, because otherwise it does imply to me that there could be some, rather than incremental change, some substantial change.
Yeah, and again, this isn't intended to imply that there would be substantial change, nor do I believe that at the end of the day, or in 2015, that you'll find substantial change. A lot of these were taken directly from the Department of Commerce's checklist, which compares different sections of the Growth Management Act. And then basically says, does your comprehensive plan do this, or how does your comprehensive plan comply? And our first look through at that, these are the things that we noticed that, you know, for example, updating buildable lands analysis, that's just updating data. So anything where it says update, it's updating data and information. It doesn't necessarily mean that there will be policy changes accompanying that.
Okay, great. And then a second quick question. I was noticing on Exhibit Two, you have shoreline, and that's in there for May. Is that done with some assessment, understanding, intelligence of when we think our shoreline management act may or may not come back to us? Or is that in there because that's just where it is?
How can I answer that question? Well, first of all, it's in there because you'll see land use, housing, and transportation sort of go off into the summer. So shoreline would be the last element that we would look at this spring. There's no magic to that date. I don't have any reconnaissance with ecology. Basically, what that represents is once ecology approves our shoreline master program, if you remember, part of the master program was new policies for the comprehensive plan. That's what literally plugs in here.
Okay. That's it?
Mm-hmm. So the date is a guess at this point, and that can slide, obviously.
Donna?
Thank you, Mayor. So looking at the calendar and listening to what you said about this going to the Planning Commission, I'm at a loss as to understand the role of the council other than kind of approving in December 14th when it's first brought to us, especially given that council doesn't sit on the Planning Commission anymore. So other than having it brought to us in December 14th of this year for our input, where's council fingerprints on it?
Well, your fingerprints on the scope of work would be tonight if you have any suggestions. As far as the typical process for this type of an update, the Planning Commission does the heavy lifting, and they would do the work, and they would make that recommendation to you. So your opportunity to, as you say, get your fingerprints on the document would be early next year. So you would be, instead of reviewing a staff recommendation, you'd be reviewing the Planning Commission's recommendation on that.
Jane?
Yeah, a question about public outreach. I see notice given in September 2014 and January. Is that a public hearing, or what format would that take for getting public input?
The Planning Commission has to hold a public hearing on the document, and that would be sometime in October, probably October is what I'm thinking based on this schedule. And again, we don't have exact dates planned out for this yet, but then the notice will go out roughly a month or so before. And then we put another notice in January 2015 to provide notice to the public that you will be having a meeting or hearing on this document. We may, depending on what we're seeing as we go through this analysis, we may be bringing smaller portions of the document to the Planning Commission earlier than that, because they meet twice a month, and we have an opportunity to maybe bring a completed chapter to them to get some feedback from them and see if they have any other suggestions before they see the final version, or their final version later on this year.
And another question, how would this dovetail, or would it, with the town center plan? Would certain parts of it have an effect on the town center plan and vice versa? And how would that go?
Good question. I think there's a great opportunity here. Depending on how the work for the town center revisioning, I think is what the council called it, would go, we do have the ability to blend that right into the land use element, for example. And depending on what you're discussing with the town center, it may touch on housing and transportation, too. By the same token, the data that we're gathering, the information we're gathering, probably will inform your efforts on the town center, too. I think once the town center effort gets a little bit more defined, we can work on how these efforts can work together.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, Dan?
Are you going to use just existing staff for this? Are you going to bring in outside people? What's the plan on that?
In the current budget, 2013-14 budget, council provided some, I think it was $25,000 for some planning assistance, which we're planning on using, and then also $45,000 for transportation consultant that would actually update our transportation model and work on the level of service issues. So we're planning on doing that.
$45,000, or maybe I'm confusing, I thought $45,000 was for the school district project.
Different, different things.
$45,000?
Yeah, different things, yeah.
So that's what we just approved last meeting, was another $45,000 that was tied to this?
Not to this.
No, it wasn't tied to this. That was tied to the school district.
Yeah.
Okay, so $45,000 was in the original budget?
That's correct, specifically for the transportation, for the modeling update. And the modeling update takes account of projected growth and where it might be.
So run that one by me a little bit further. So transportation consultant, $45,000 to, I'm just trying to understand what, I mean, I think that, I think of the comp plan as, well, I share, first I share Mike's perspective that review light is what you need, because being completely candid, comp plan is one of those things that we never refer to. And we don't, it just, it sits there, and occasionally you refer to it in an Agenda Bill, but that doesn't get reviewed by the council. Maybe staff uses it, and if they do, that's great. But so I'd like to understand what part of this transportation requires bringing in an outside consultant? What is going to be, what's going to be involved in that?
Well, we don't have a transportation planner on staff.
I know that.
So the consultant would write the transportation element, also update the city's transportation model, gather the data for existing traffic, trip generation around the island, existing traffic on the streets, for example, project out into 20-year future as to what that traffic would look like in 20 years, and then help you determine what types of capital improvements might be necessary in a 20-year timeframe, which is comprehensive plan, you have to look at it in a 20-year timeframe. What type of improvements might be necessary to maintain your desired level of service, which right now is level of service C around the island, around most of the island. I believe that you're going to find, in fact, I know you're going to find that there are already intersections within the city that are worse level of service than C, and that's an issue that you'll need to discuss on how to deal with that issue.
And that is absolutely required to do that kind of LOS analysis?
Yes.
As part of this comp plan?
Yes, because you're currently out of compliance with the comp plan. The city is.
I'm going to take a turn, Mike, and then I'll come back to you. I hear the interest in light. I hear you say this will be light compared to a big update. I don't support the idea that we don't look regionally. We don't consider how we integrate with what's happening outside of our community or what's been teed up regionally. I think that it makes all the sense in the world to figure out what is going on around us and how we can fit, might fit, want to fit into that, rather than assuming that we're a static city that's not advancing. I understand Mike's concern that there is change that we may well decide that's not the change we want. But I think to assume that we don't even want to contemplate change would be foolish for us. And so my feeling is, yeah, absolutely, we ought to be looking regionally, trying to figure out how we fit within the broader region, and then having a robust discussion when we come to it of exactly what our, which elements of that regional future do fit with where we want to go. Back to Mike, and then if somebody else wants it.
Okay, so in any plan, a lot of it has to do with the assumptions, and I get the feeling that we, the city, I'll just say the city, has accepted the linear projection of growth dictated by the GMA. And I think that's a key element. And I'm questioning, how are you going to decide on the growth projection assumptions?
Well, those have already been decided as part of the countywide planning policies. So there's a number.
Not our decision, it's the city, it's the council's determination or approval of that. So it's not directed to us. We own it. So shouldn't that, is a very fundamental assumption going forward. And I mean, if you were to make the wrong assumption, an assumption that the council doesn't agree on, with population projections, and work six months, and we say, no, that's not, we're not comfortable with that, or you haven't shown support that we can absorb that on this island that is not growing geographically, then that's six months of work that's not applicable. So, I mean, that's a key, how do you, should we not, should you not bring that forward to the council early, the population projection that we subscribe, that we approve?
Yeah. So the pop-
Scott, can you, I'm going to ask, so Mike made some statements rather than questions, and I, while I respect his expertise in GMA, I'd like to hear your take on population projection acceptance. How would you view that we need to address that growth?
Well, the population projection, and I'm sorry, I don't have the number in my head of what that number is at this point, but that's already been determined by the countywide planning policies that were adopted in 2012 by the King County Council and ratified by all the cities in the county. So we have a number to work with, both for population and employment. So then the next, the next thing we have to do is determine, do we have the land available or the density available or the growth capacity available over a 20-year period to accommodate that proposed population and employment growth? And those are the numbers that my staff has started to work on. We're, I'm happy to provide that information to you when we have it done. And at that point, if we see that there's a major problem, then I think it would be appropriate to have a conversation with the council about where do you want to go from here. My expectation, knowing from what happened with the last buildable lands analysis and where we are today, my expectation is that we will be able to accommodate the projected growth already here on the island without changes to our allowable densities. So I think we'll be okay, and there will be, there won't be a need to upzone neighborhoods or change densities on the island.
So what did he just say? Did he-
Well, I think he said that we do have some latitude, but it's not the, and I don't want to put words in it. But I think I heard was, we don't have the latitude to say we reject the population growth. We do have the latitude to say how we want to deal with that.
Where and how.
May I respectfully request that the director research that and research on what latitude we truly do have? Unless you want to say, you know, without a doubt, what GMA says Mercer Island does? Is that what you want, I mean, I don't think you want to say what GMA says Mercer Island does.
I'm not prepared at that level tonight. So if the council would like us to do that research, we can. What I'm saying is, I think what we're going to be showing you, putting that question aside, I think what we're going to be showing you is that the capacity that's already planned and zoned here on the island will accommodate the growth that's projected in the 2012 countywide planning policies.
Making that question moot.
Making it a moot question, exactly.
Debbie, then Donna.
Yeah, I think what I would, I think the broader question is, you know, what are the implications of the GMA and the extent to which any city in any category has the ability to say yea, nay, modify, et cetera, whether it's regarding density and population or other particular categories and metrics we have outlined in here. So I think for me, what would be helpful is just understanding sort of the legislative boundaries of the GMA, so that when we go into the review, be it sooner or later, we already have that framework in mind, and we can keep that forefront when we start considering what we do or don't want to do. So I think, you know, sort of like a basic rounding in GMA would help me, could preempt some conversations.
We can do that.
Donna?
Yeah. I just want to bring a little bit of context to the update of this plan. That was, so this plan that we have currently, granted it might just be on a shelf, but was done, was approved in 2005, right? It was the last one?
Five or six, yes.
Okay. So at that time, there was basically no town center. There was one building, I think, that was currently beginning to be built. There was no farmer's market. There were no stoplights on the island except on 40th. There was no double-level parking ride. There were seven men on the council. There was no sustainability committee or staff, and the list goes on. So while I realize that there, you know, this is just a plan and just a document, Mercer Island has changed quite a bit, and our community, I think, has changed quite a bit. You know, we also didn't realize that we needed more capacity, school capacity at the time, because we didn't. So things have changed. So I just want to kind of bring that perspective. And as we look at the 20-year capital facilities that is part of this, I really think that that is an important component of this, because as we, if we hark back, I guess even 2005, and look at, we didn't have the schools planned, we didn't necessarily, we weren't in all agreement about when the South End Fire Station need to be replaced, the Seward Lake Line was a huge capital project. So my point, and a lot of these things came up all at the same time. There's going to be a lot of construction going on on Mercer Island and bonding all at the same time. So I would really love us to take a look at that 20-year vision. We have more stoplights coming with light rail in the town center, we're going to need more crosswalks. Do the new apartments need dog parks? Do they need bigger sidewalks, more parking, whatever the issue. So while I get that I don't want us to spend too much time on this, this does give us an opportunity to really look at some of those big community issues on a grander scale instead of kind of one-off at a council meeting. So I do think this is a valuable document, and I hope we take it as such. There's no question there, but the question is, my questions are, do people like the following topics that might, since you have proposed that to us, and we haven't really gone there yet? I would just throw out that we might want to consider looking and talking about green building, talking about trash, compost, and recycling pickup frequency. That has come up a lot, and as we look out 20 years, where do we need to be with that? Do we need to look at, again, if we're a growing, more dense community, do we need to look- to look at childcare zoning policies that would make sure that we have those sorts of things? And similarly, something that Debbie's brought up a lot, senior housing, are these things that we are anticipating as our population ages in different directions?
And you captured a sustainability across all things topic, and I'm assuming that that would mean that there would be a thought process that would go on into where we logically put some elements there?
Yes, and the way I would see that working is, you know, green building, for example, not having regulations in a lot of detail about green building, but a policy that might say, the city supports green buildings to mean X, Y, and Z, or the city supports building new structures in the most sustainable manner possible within reason. Feasible, I'm trying to get to feasibility. For childcare zoning policies and senior housing, I could see, you know, if it was appropriate, some policies talking about how important daycare is on the island, and that the city should ensure that there is always a place for daycares to go, type of thing.
Okay. Other input for staff? Benson?
Just a couple of comments, I guess. One of them is, I don't know how the comprehensive plan has been used in the past, but I strongly hope that this council uses it well in the future, because it is supposed to be the plan by which policies are developed. So whether it's the staff or the council, I think we need to show it the proper importance that it really is intended to have. The other thing is, the, and looking at this schedule, the question I have is, as the planning commission gets to look at it, do we get a copy of that as well? Or do we have to wait until the planning commission has gone through the whole process? Or do we get, can we begin to review drafts of the comprehensive plan?
Sure, sure. I think that's appropriate. Again, this is a legislative item, so you're not bound by some of the quasi-judicial rules. Also, all the planning commission's agenda items are on the website, too, so we can make it available that way, or you can have it available that way.
Okay. Speaking of someone who has some scars from the PIT bike plan work, I'd like to see early drafts as well. Then Jane, and then Mike.
Scott, I just have a question on Exhibit 1 under land use element. I just don't understand, what would be included with consider health and active living policies? Is that like parks and pedestrian, wheelchair crossings, or what does that include?
Well, we need to, that's the exact word out of the statute is to consider them.
And what are they? How could they be?
I'm not sure they're totally relevant here, but in other communities where there's a problem providing healthy food that's accessible to communities, so for example, you have apartments with lower-income folks on an arterial, and the closest grocery store is three miles away, not accessible by transit. The closest, the closest, the closest healthy food is three miles away, not accessible by transit. The closest food store is a mini-market down the block that carries no healthy food. That's something a lot of communities are struggling with. So that's an example that also gets wound into things like parks, trails, bicycles. So by providing bicycle trails, for example, or bike paths, you are supporting a healthy community. That's just one, one of many possible examples. Again, I don't anticipate that we will be recommending a lot of policy changes. I think Mercer Island's done a very good job with this. But it is, again, it's one of those, we have to check the box, and we have to show our work, not only to you, but we have to show our work to the State Department of Commerce to show them that we've actually done the review that's required.
Can I just also just jump on that? So I say that to schools might also be an example, and again, since we will be having, hopefully, a new school, that other than just checking the box, there will be some activities to do around, you know, active living, walking sidewalks, safe areas to walk.
Mike?
Thank you.
I'll save it for other business. All right.
Anyone else?
No, we don't need a motion.
I just wanted to address something Councilmember Wong said, and that's a really good point, and something Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Grous also stated, that this is a plan that sort of lives on the shelf and nobody looks at it. Councilmember Wong says maybe council should pay more attention to it. At the, when this is adopted, I want this document to be relevant to you. We have to have it under state law. We have to have a comprehensive plan. And it does inform a lot of things, its staff does. It informs quasi-judicial decisions, some that you don't see. We do analysis of comprehensive plan policy as part of our work. But ideally, the document should be relevant to you, so it's a document that you would want to use in your decision-making. So I'll just put that out there for you.
I'll expect Dan to read it before every meeting.
I'm gonna have a reading from it from every meeting. A reading, I'll read a chapter for every meeting.
Have some music playing in the background, too. All right, no questions required. We've given our input, if there's any other input, you, talk to Scott offline. We move to-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We move to other business, councilmember absences. We have none this evening. Any upcoming that we're not yet aware of? Planning, schedule? Noel?
Yes, thank you. So we've got a, I've got a pretty full agenda for February 24th. We've got the transportation extravaganza, that we've got study session that we've got set for two hours, and we have the long plaque consideration. So I think probably what you're going to see is that we're going to move sewer code, if you can stand the anticipation of waiting another month. I think we're going to move that to March 3rd, just to make sure we've got plenty of time and aren't too jammed on the 24th. The other thing I wanted to point out is the directors and I are working through some of the direction and action items we got in your planning session. We're having our own planning time later in the month to create our work plans around that, and then you'll start to see some of those items show up in later calendar items here. So you can look forward to seeing those.
Board appointments. Well, so, hang on just a second. Yeah, I do have this piece of paper back here. So I, in sort of adding on to what we had done previously, one thing I had forgotten was that the school district, Gary had asked us for a school district advisory board representative. I have asked Debbie to take that role. It's a, I think, every two-month or every three-month meeting to hear what's up with the school district as part of a larger citizen group. The town center visioning group, I would appoint Councilmembers Grous, Sen, and Wong to that. The library committee, we weren't quite sure where this was going. It's pretty clear at this point, based on the letter we received today, that the council is going to need to stay pretty involved in this. And so what I'd like to do is have the three folks who I appointed earlier sort out amongst themselves, so that would be Debbie, Dan, and Benson, sort out what the right level of ongoing involvement is, but it sounds like you're not going to be able to step away from this one right away, based on this letter we've received. So, and the booster club, we already know, was Tana and Jane. We're going to take that role. And you're the ones with the Seahawks paraphernalia, so you know, I can say, you're the right, you're the right ones for that. Those are the appointments I have for you.
Question, I didn't hear, I wasn't listening, I guess, at the very first thing you mentioned about the school, how is it different from the city council school board committee?
It's different. This is actually a combination of citizens, and I think there were even some school district folks on it. It's essentially a listening or a information dissemination group that Gary and the board have put together. So it's not about, as a council member, Debbie will, I think, sit quietly, hear what they have to say, and then bring it back to us, or disseminate it amongst others. It's not as much an input forum, I don't believe. So our other normal school board interaction means remain as they have been. Any other questions? Councilmember reports. Councilmember Cyril? No? Jane?
No, except a reminder, if you haven't already sent in your ballot vote for the school bond issue.
That's it?
That's it. Dan?
Just to advise the council that Bruce, Mike, and I were down in Olympia for Association of Washington Cities Days last week, for two days. Met with our legislators, who of course never actually come out in public as a general rule, but, no, I met with Tana, Judy, and Steve, and their legislative, Tana in her legislative capacity, and also met with others, other legislators, and with our other council members and officials from cities from around the state. Quite informative, and it's just, the one thing you realize very quickly is that the vast majority of cities in the state have so many more issues they're dealing with than Mercer Island does. And we should count ourselves lucky. They are, you look at what they're having to deal with the legislature on, and it makes our menu very paltry. So that was honestly good to see, but at least it made me realize that while we have some challenges, they're, they're not anywhere near the level that some of the other cities have.
Debbie? I think I'll bring up the topic that I'm sure Benson and Noel can chime in, or perhaps have their own perspective on, and that was, we attended the KCLS board meeting last week, and first of all, there was an incredible representation from the Mercer Island community, very organized in terms of speakers, subject matter, et cetera. So we did go through, there was a public comment period, and then, as usual, per this particular agenda structure, they had an agenda item, then they came back to discuss the potential for community input in the revision process, or in the remodel process. So in the end, you know, many steps in between, a lot of great discussion and dialogue. As the letter represents, they have come back to us, they are giving us the opportunity to provide input into the proposed remodel. There's a schedule whereby there should be a report back to them, if, on the status, if not the end result, February 26th. And I think there was a very important recognition and acknowledgement that was made, and it was Board Member McClelland, who I believe has been or still is an urban planner, and she referred to the principle in urban planning of defining with the community that which is sacred, or sacred facilities or services. And her reaction, and there were several nods, and again, references to the fact that the Mercer Island community holds its library as a sacred place. And I thought that was very important insofar as acknowledging that there is policy procedure practice that comes from the board in terms of its tens of library remodels, but there's also a very important emotive and community component that must be involved as well. So I feel all in all that we were able to represent the requests that came through in the letter, and hopefully we'll now be able to proceed fairly quickly, both as a city and definitely as an engaged community with KCLS.
Tana?
I just wanted to echo what Dan said about you guys coming down to Olympia. Yes, indeed, you were there. But did want to say that you guys, I know that was in doubt.
I never saw them. I don't know what he's talking about.
That really just didn't start right, but I just wanted to say that it was really evident what regional players, our council members are, and the great respect people have for our leadership. So that was really great to see, and while there are definitely some, as Dan said, that other cities have larger or more issues than we did, there's also an amazing common agenda when you look at funding and some of the other issues that all cities are dealing with. So that was also very interesting to see. I also did want to mention that it's National School Counseling Week, and we really, on Mercer Island, have amazing school counselors, and that it's one of those values that this community puts their money where their mouth is, that we really, we support them, it's a city, we fund them. And I think we do not realize that that is not a common practice across the state or across the country. And there are so many funding requests that I hear about, or needs in our, in different schools and communities, that our school counselors meet here on Mercer Island. So I just want to do an extra shout-out to our school counselors and to our community for funding them.
Benson?
I attended a meeting, actually, on Monday, the day after our planning session, it was the Gathering of the Greens at the library, and that was actually a well-timed meeting. Ross Friedman did a great job, at least for folks who are interested in sustainability issues. And Ross explained the six-year sustainability plan that was being formulated, and it was a great opportunity, because we basically welcome the input from citizens to help start filling in the blanks as far as future issues that might come up. But again, Ross did a fantastic job, and so I shout-out to him.
He's on a roll. He did well at the planning session as well. Let's see, speaking for myself, there is, as I mentioned earlier when Jane was here, a public hearing of the King County Council tomorrow evening, 5:30, sign-in, 6 o'clock, public testimony, if anyone cares to join me there. I am planning to go and would love to have some company. So that is on the agenda. We, Ross, again, myself, a number of mayors, and the county executive have a meeting on the 13th, I believe, at which we'll be talking about sustainability goals and some of the direction that Dow Constantine's intending to go with his thrust in the coming months. And so that's some exciting conversations, and I like the fact that we're going to be part of that, and that Ross is going to be a big part of that, too. I think that's all I've got. So with that, we move to, we're going to have an executive session or two. So Katie, help me first, do we need to have, do we need to break this into two separate executive sessions?
Yes.
Okay. And do you really want to say 30 minutes right off the bat, because it's going to be at least that?
If you think it's going to be at least that, we might as well say 30 minutes.
No, this is how much you think it's going to be.
I don't know how long the first one, I think that Noel, you might be able to speak to that better.
The only thing I don't want to do is have it be 10 minutes, and then we're waiting 20 to-
Exactly.
So-
Do you want to say 15?
I want to say whatever number you think is right.
Let's shoot for 15, and we'll go from there.
Okay, very good. So we are going to move to executive session to consider the selection of a site for the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price, RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110, Perin 1, Perin B, for approximately 15 minutes. It's 9:29, so we'll try and be back here at 9:45.
Bruce, what was that, King County?
It's the, it's the input on the transportation- It's the, it's a discuss, input on the transportation-
Yeah, what you have tax increases, come on.